Welcome to our regular council meeting on Tuesday, November 22, 2022. We're thank you for your attendance and we welcome those who are watching us via YouTube also. So, thank you for being here. We will go ahead and have our opening by Councilman David Erickson.
I'd like to do my opening in the form of a prayer. My Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful to be able to be here. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve. We're grateful to be leaders within the trenches and listening to everybody and serving the patrons that we should. We're grateful to be stewards of their money. We pray for influence and wisdom tonight as we talk and discuss things which spends their money for the things that are necessary, things that they need, things that serve them. We're grateful for opportunities that we have to enjoy freedoms that we enjoy, that we are able to each and every day have comfort within this beautiful valley. We pray for those that are in the armed services. We pray for our sheriff's department, those who are also in the merchants, medical service, and fire, that they will be blessed, that they'll be cared for, and that they'll be blessed in all theirs endeavors as they seek to protect us and help us. We also would ask thee to be with us tonight, to have wisdom and be inspired to make the good decisions on other policies, and that we'll understand that which is being shared with each other, and that we'll also feel that the necessity of what we decide. We again thank thee for these things and ask thee again for thy presence to be here and everything, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman David Erickson. Appreciate that. Sorry, Gordy. Has everyone had a chance to review and approve, review the agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we, on the agenda, that we move 10A Ordinance 2022-32 to the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that.
For further discussion.
All right.
We'll also move that we change with 10B.
10B, so 10A and 10B?
Yeah.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we move on pending action, item 10A Ordinance 2022-32 and Resolution 2022-28 to the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you.
We need to approve the agenda.
Oh, all right.
To approve the amendment.
Okay.
To move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Have we had a chance to review the minutes from October 25, 2022, October 27, 2022, November 1, 2022, and November 8, 2022?
Madam Chair, I have corrections on three of those.
Okay.
I think I might have misreading the 27th. But on the October 25 minute, on 11D, it shows action, but there's blanks there, there's like a little asterisk, so it's not finished. There just doesn't indicate what the motion is. That needs to be corrected. And also, the executive session needs to record the motion to adjourn and the vote to adjourn from executive session. On November 1, under attendance, it says Deputy County Executive David Zook, so that needs to be corrected with his proper title. Also, Taylor Swornson is listed as other attendants, but that he should be moved to staff because he was representing the county attorney's office. Also, on 3A and I believe elsewhere, it's probably just autocorrect, but it says Dale Murray instead of Dane Murray.
I saw that too.
And then again, on the executive session, needs to record the motion and vote to adjourn from executive session. On November 8, also, it had both Dale and Dane Murray in that one, but Dale needs to be Dane.
Okay.
And again, the motion to adjourn from executive session and the vote needs to be recorded in those minutes.
All right. Okay, with those changes, do we want to approve those minutes or wait until those minutes have all been corrected?
I'd like, I move that we just bring them back next time with those corrections.
Okay. Awesome. There's been a motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we will wait to approve the minutes from those meetings until the next meeting when all the corrections have been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Very good. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Our county executive, do you have any reports you'd like to give to us?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, looks like we're going on, moving on to items of special interest. We have a consolidation of public defender office update by Mike McGinnis. Welcome, Mike.
I brought the wrong one. Is that good? Glad you're here. There we go. All right. Good evening, counsel.
They aren't smoking.
I've come to give an update. We've addressed this earlier about a possible merger with the Box Elder County Public Defender's Office. I'd kind of wanted to give you an update where that is at this point and kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at as far as how the partnership would work and the structure of that. First off, I wanted to share a little about how the Box Elder County's Public Defender's Office works. I've shared a little bit how ours is structured. They have two district court defenders, and they have one district court judge. Where up here in Cache County, we have three district court judges. They have two juvenile court defenders and one juvenile court judge. So there's two judges total. And within the district here, we share those judges as well. So the juvenile court judge actually in Box Elder comes to our county once a week to do cases. And in talking to the IDC, it looks like we have about one-third, Box Elder has about one-third of the caseload compared to Cache County. Some of the reasons we've been looking into this, the partnership is lowering the operating cost of both offices, sharing resources, resources, for example, legal research materials, investigators, things such as that, we can share cost. And we also qualify for additional grants. If we, there's certain grants that get priority with the Indian Defense Commission, and if you're a merge system, a merge counties, you move up the, you qualify for additional grants, I guess that's the best way to say it. Whatever money is allotted, you are allowed to, you're first come, first served, the ones that are part of the merge system. And lastly, and most importantly, I think it will help improve the public defender system in both counties.
Can I ask a question, Mike?
Sure.
On those grants, are they divided a certain way or does it just go into all one pool?
Good question. So as of right now, the way we're looking to structure this, we would each keep our own grants. In the future, I foresee that there would be additional grants that we would share because of merging together. But as of right now, no. And grants, I think, would be something like an additional person to help with both counties, additional defender that could help here and in Box Elder.
Okay, thank you.
So merge, merge systems aren't unusual. There's other places in the state where there are other counties that merged, Public Defender's Office, Juab County and Utah County, Weber County and Morgan, and Iron County, there's three counties that have all merged together. And what's interesting, I've contacted each one of these counties, they all do it differently. They have all structured their, their partnership differently. For example, in Juab County, they actually, most of the defenders live in Utah County and just go to Juab County and, and work, whereas Weber. What happened there? There we go. In Weber County and Morgan County, it's kind of a mixed bag. Some of the defenders live in Morgan County and kind of go back and forth between Weber. Iron County doesn't, they don't share defenders between counties. They just share a public defender manager between all three counties. So a public defender in Iron County never goes to Kane County and vice versa. They all just stay in their own counties.
So what does the manager do?
The manager does what I do. So they're there to go over, and I'm going to go over that here in a second, of my duties, why they want a managing defender. So in sharing the manager, the terms of agreement would be, they would share only our manager, which would be me and my staff. So we wouldn't share public defenders at this point. Our public defenders wouldn't go over there and do cases and vice versa. They would just be wanting somebody to handle, and in my position, I handle all the grants. I handle dealing with hiring, getting new contracts for public defenders, talking to the local government, dealing with caseloads, conflicts of cases, and things such, such as that. And so they want, right now, they have a managing defender who does it part-time. He feels it's very difficult to do his private practice and do that, do that at the same time. So whereas I would be a full-time managing defender for both counties. Wouldn't be a good PowerPoint presentation without some technical difficulties, would it? Let me just not show what's up on my screen here. There we go. I close out of it, see? Did it move? Okay. Again, it's back to the structure of our partnership, the way we're proposing it, is each county would continue to have their own public defender budgets. We wouldn't share budgets with each, each other. So each county would have to have a budget that's passed between their commission and our council. We wouldn't share things like, which could be significant costs, like stuff for the death penalty. That's something they would have to bear the cost for. We have a different system where we deal with it than they do. Things like appellate work, they would have to deal with that. We, we deal with it in a different, different way. But there's some of the obligations in what I do, my job, and we kind of talked about already. But this is the main proposal that we have is Cache would manage the Box Elder office and Box Elder will pay 35% of the managing defender's cost. And we were thinking of doing that through a MOU. I've sent that off. I don't know if Taylor's got that yet. Did Mr. Murray send that to you?
I had a chance to review and I had some suggestions to make.
Perfect, perfect. So yeah, we're working on that right now to get, to get that done. We're expecting something around. We haven't worked out the exact details, and we're still doing that with Box Elder. It would save our county somewhere around 80,000 to 100,000 a year by merging. But if you have any suggestions, Taylor, do you, I mean, do you want to share those with us?
Most of my concerns were related to the specific language in the agreement and how specific it may or may not be. So as far as like broad top-line suggestions, not really.
Okay, awesome. That's pretty much it, is right now, we're waiting, obviously, on some things to deal with, getting the paperwork approved by the county attorney's office, and and also, we're waiting on Box Elder County to kind of give us the okay that they've got all their ducks in a row to say, yes, we're ready to do this or not. There's a lot of little bit of red tape we're going through right now to get, for them, to get them to onboard with everything, but that's pretty much it, as far as the proposal goes.
Any questions for Mike? Comments?
What does Rich County do?
Rich County has a contract just for public defender work. They haven't, I mean, we haven't approached them to, to merge with our system yet. That's something that we maybe would like to do in the future, but we haven't, we haven't proposed that yet. What I would like to do is come back and after we have all the approval from Box Elder, the MOU completed, and let's, let you review that and go forward from there.
I think it'd be good for everybody to understand, right? How many, how many attorneys, when you're fully staffed in the county attorney's office, prosecutors do we have in the county?
Prosecutors? Mike will be more familiar with this than I am. I roughly.
So we have two civil, and then you have, man, you guys got attorneys over one, three, six, like eight? Is that somebody right? Eight criminal ones?
And then how many public defenders? I mean, and, and it's done by contract. We don't employ public defenders, so you got to find attorneys that'll
Right.
that will work a contract, and they may or may not take the work. So how many?
So right now, we have three full-time district court contracts, a full-time juvenile contract, so that's four, and then we have some part-time individuals that help us out with juvenile court. So five or six contracts total.
So I think it's, it's a big deal for us to really focus on this. I mean, I've said it before, the basics of government, right? Roads, public safety, the court system, that's really what we do. We need to make sure we're doing that well before we move on to vanity items, and so I think this is one we really need to
Yeah.
focus in on.
No, I appreciate the count, the council's been helping me deal with this and, and deal with the commission over there. They've been great to work with. Jeff over there's been good to work with, and I think it's a good idea, but if we can get everybody in line and go from there.
Mike, thanks for your work on this. I think it can be a really good thing for our county and, and for our citizens, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, very good. Item B, Providence City Request for RAPS Deadline Extension and Possible Location Change. I do not see the mayor here for this.
Madam Chair, I just texted their city manager. He said he thought the mayor would be here. He said he's on his way, so.
Okay, we can come back to that. Okay, thank you. Logan City Request for RAPS Deadline Extension, Russ Akina. Thank you, Russ. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair and County Council members. Logan City has two projects that were awarded with RAPS funding from December 20th, and the, and the termination date or expiration date is this coming December. The, the two projects that the city is requesting an extension of time on is the 1800 South Spring Creek Trail. There was $45,000 that were awarded for that project. We have run into some difficulty with labor shortages, both at the design level and then contractors, contractor interest in the projects. Not a huge project, but it's large enough to where Logan City crews cannot handle it with their workload. We're working with contractors that may have an interest in it, but they're telling us that they need more time for this, and so we're asking if we can at least get through June 30. That would give us a better window, anticipating that we can go out to bid
Alert.
in January and have, and have that project done by then. The second is the Logan Middle Canal Trail, and there were $60,000 that was awarded for that project in the same, same year, so it has the same expiration as of December of next month, end of December of next month. And there too, we've had difficulty in, in having contractors interested in this project. This primarily is a two-part project. The first part of it has been completed with assistance from UDOT. This project had some federal transportation alternative money, tap money associated with it. And so what UDOT was under direction on, on that part of the project was putting in a pedestrian signal, which if you travel 800 East by the softball field at about 12:50 North, you'll see now, there's actually two hawk signals as they refer to it, these button-activated signals for pedestrians to cross 8th East. That part of the project's now done. The second part is the construction of a concrete culvert over the canal so that people on the sidewalk there on that east side of the street can safely negotiate the canal and then continue on either going north or along the canal right-of-way to 1400 East. So on, on that particular project, it is scheduled to go to bid in February. Our anticipation is that it would take until the end of July 30, just to be sure that we have a schedule that fits with what contractors are looking at when they bid in February. Obviously, obviously, if we can get the project done before July 31, we would do everything that we could to expedite the paperwork process on our end to, to close that project before then. But we're anticipating July 31, say, completion on that particular project. Those are the two that Logan City is requesting an extension of time on. If you have any questions regarding the request, I'll try to answer those now.
I may have missed that, Russ. What was the dollar amount on the July 31?
Yes, on that project, it was, it was awarded 60,000 for the Logan Middle Canal Trail.
Russ, how many years after you get approval from the RAPS people, how many years do they give you to do the project before?
Generally, it's 24 months.
24 months.
In two years.
I know I've always been concerned that a lot of these projects, people come forth and get them approved, and they're not anywhere near ready to go ahead with them. And so I've always said, no, we shouldn't be funding projects that are down the road ways when there's projects that are ready to go now that could be funded and that could be done. So, you know, I'm always a little reluctant to keep extending. You know, you've got two years to do it. And it's like, maybe you're going to need three or maybe four, but anyway, that's just probably to the RAPS committee. My suggestion is, is as you go through these, make sure that these projects are ready to be done in the timeframe that you're giving them, because some of these will go on for several years past their date, and that's money that's tied up in the fund. I guess the fund's still there. It's not going away, but I feel sorry for those places that don't get funded that was ready to go and had them, you know, could have used the money then.
Counsel.
I understand what you're saying, Gordy, but we're kind of in, to me, I, the past couple of years, we've been in an environment that is, well, you call fairly volatile.
That's true.
And just even get a contractor, just even get, you know, the lines, even if they have supplies, what you budgeted for and what you initially went out and, and got bid for to be able to put in that application, and then even in three months, six months after that, even if
That's true.
the approval, it is just like pulling teeth, trying to get things lined up, and we understand. I think that it, due to the circumstances, what we're dealing with right now with the way the, the economy is, and, and hopefully, we'll get some stability in it, therefore, I would move that we go ahead and approve this extension of these deadlines. Should we just say one more year from the, you know, from the last deadline, you know, from the existing day? You may not need that, but we'll give you that, that time, which is basically extends at just three years instead of the two, and that would do it?
That's very gracious of you.
I, I think that's, in this environment, it's better to take that little extra time and get a quality project done, so.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we do go ahead and approve the Logan City Request for RAPS Deadline Extension for one year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any approve, any disapprove? Okay, thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right.
Madam Chair, the city manager from Providence, Ryan Snow, is now here.
Okay, awesome. All right, we have a request from Providence, Providence City for a RAPS Deadline Extension and Possible Location Change. We have the city manager, and if you'll state your name, please.
My name is Ryan Snow, and I'm the city manager for Providence City.
Thank you.
First, I apologize for being late. The mayor and I agreed that she was a better public speaker, and so I had let her do that. I'm assured that she is the better public speaker, so please forgive mine. We have had, you know, a difficult time trying to get pickleball courts in the right location and trying to identify that. We have wanted to make sure they're the right location. We've wanted to make sure that they're in the right spot. It's been maybe a year ago that we came and said, you know, we'd had some problem with, with our initial location. And that initial location was right next to some townhouses and, and a very noisy spot. And so, you know, the plan was, well, okay, we'll, we'll move, we'll, we'll respond to that. We respected that. And so we took a different approach, and we tried to say, okay, let's spread these out and maybe place individual ones throughout the community, which I believe is still a great thought and idea. But when we got the bid back, it was, it was four times the, the amount of the expectation, and it was, it was a combination of a problem with, with cement shortages, problem with contractors, and at that point, it just was, was something so far of a, of a shock to it, we were, we were a little lost, to be honest. When it comes in four times what you expect it, it's just a shock. And we only got one person that would, that even responded to it.
Excuse me, Ryan, how much was, was the request?
The requ, there's two requests.
Okay.
So one is for 75,000 and the other one's for 50,000. I'm, if I'm off in a, in a, in a thousand, I apologize, but those are, I believe, those are right.
Okay, thank you.
And there are two of them. But we have, at this point, we've gone through, we've visited with the pickleball community. We've visited with the tennis community and investigated, you know, converting tennis courts, visited with a lot of the other public in different areas. And so our request is to extend another year to take both of those, and at least one is already expired, one will, is set to expire this December. Be able to take both of those for 12 months and be able to complete it this construction season. We've met with two different contractors. We, we're comfortable with where that'll go in Zollinger Park. We have two different locations so that, so that it's site conditions, so we've, we've identified those. They are far enough away, they're in the center of the park, far enough away from, from housing, and we're confident that, that those will be the best locations we have. And, but it's taken us a while to get there, and we appreciate the patience, but that's where we're at now, and we'd come back and say, now that we know better, and we had to, we had to pull back and, and learn, and we've learned, and I think we're in a better spot to ask for that now. So that's what our request is.
Madam Chair, I, knowing some of the challenges that went on with pickleball courts in North Logan and the sound issues, I am very sympathetic to the challenges that Providence has faced. So I would move that we extend the deadline for both these projects to the end of next year.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we do extend the Providence City Request for RAPS Deadline and, and Possible Location Change to the end of 2023, correct?
Yes, thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Ryan. Appreciate you coming. All right, we are at 5:30, so we're going to go down to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We need to set a public hearing for December 6, 2022, Ordinance 2022-33 for the Sandcastle Ranch Rezone, a request to rezone 5.0 acres from the agricultural A-10 zone to the rural 2, RU-2 zone located at 420 South, 3200 West. the rural two, RU-two zone located at four-twenty south, thirty-two hundred west, near Logan.
Want to go ahead and read the next one, and we'll?
Yeah, that's a good idea, thank you. All right, and then set a public hearing for December sixth, 2022, resolution, resolution 2022-32, approving the appointment of a representative to the Avon Cemetery District Board of Trustees.
Madam Chair, move to set these public hearings as you described for December sixth.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we set the public hearings for both of these res, for the ordinance and the resolution to December sixth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we will now go back to have a 2022 Cache County Fair and Rodeo report, please.
Let's start with Lamont.
Okay. Lamont, you've been chosen.
The only thing we require is that you use, we use Scott in your presentation somehow.
Let's see, we talked about that. You said it's been eighteen years you've been here, and you've tried that eighteen years.
Yeah, it's never, it never happened.
Well, I appreciate being here, and I appreciate Scott. Trish was tied up, their working cattle, she called me about three o'clock and said she just wasn't gonna be able to make it. So, but on behalf of all of us on the rodeo committee in Lane, the chairs of the, the fair, we just appreciate all of you, the council, the executive, for the support that we've had in the rodeo and the things that we've done. We've come, come a long ways. This year, we was awarded, this is voted on by the PRCA and, and the Wilderness Circuit, so we're the number-one medium rodeo in the state of Utah. So during the Wilderness Circus, we, Circuit, it was a circus sometimes, but anyhow, that's Idaho, Utah, and Nevada. And so this is a huge deal and very-
Awesome, congratulations.
... excited, and it's not without all the support that we get that those kind of things happen. This year, we was able to come in, we, we sold out, but we was able to come in eleven thousand under our proposed budget. Our contributions, when I was visiting with finance, we was, we projected about sixty-two thousand in contributions, that's our sponsors and, and these there, not ticket sales. And we had committed a little bit, we have eight thousand that we come in over that, but it was, I think seventy-two thousand was the, the gross amount, but there was some of that committed in another way, so. So really good there, the, we was sold out Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and even though we're building the Wednesday night, it's, we had about a thousand more than the air traditions is interesting. I know a lot of you have, I have talked to you a little, and I mainly finance, and that has been brought through our budget, where our budget comes in early, we have been approached by the PRCA to, we qualify to join in on what's called a playoff series rodeo. That's where sixty rodeos across the country have been selected out of six hundred to be a part of this. And it costs us a little more. We have gone over the figures so that it wouldn't be any more money, in other words, we can generate it out of the funds in what we do without going into any general funds. And I know that's been presented and it's in the budget. And so I hope, really appreciate support on that. I have a meeting on Thursday of next week, week from Thanksgiving, in Vegas with this group of rodeos. And I, I said, you know, we, I can't say yea or nay, I can't do that. I says, I can, I've presented everything, and until this body here approves it, and so that's when we'll know. And they've been good enough to hold on to that until this decision was made, because this all come up within the last two months. But it's an honor to be pulled in there. What that means is we have to increase our prize money on some areas, but we was high enough that we was even invited. But the contestants that enter into this rodeo are qualifying for another rodeo similar to, it's not an NFR, but there's two million dollars in prize money. And if they turn out, if they enter our rodeo and turn out, they're penalized from that. So to me, it's an insurance policy that these contestants will stay and come to our rodeo. And that's been one of the biggest problems with some of the rodeos. And last year, fortunately, we was, we were well-attended. We had more than four-hundred-and-sixty, seventy contestants here. Our slack escalated, so because of this, we're projecting to have slack on Tuesday and Thursday of this year because we know that's gonna increase. So those are some of the things, and I just appreciate everybody that I work with and, and you folks here and your support, so any questions that I might can answer?
So virtually, what you're telling us is that the quality of riders and contestants and whatnot will be greatly improved, and the lure is, is that we have higher prize money, that they will wanna be here. And they're penalized if they sign in, don't show.
And right now, and we'll be discussing that down there, that's one of the most frustrating things with committees and organizations like we are, is, you know, you put all this effort in, and then a contestant can go in their three or four rodeos, and you know he's not going to all of them. And we can't, anyhow, we're trying to work on that. But this here is a, is a real plus to not have that happen. Now, we didn't have to raise a lot, but what we've been is split money. So our timed events has been less than our rough stock. And so all we're doing is putting, bringing the rough stock, we gotta be equal money, other than the breakaway roping does not. I called and visited with them, and we're high enough on that anyhow, they says, you're fine, don't worry about that. So, but the PRCA does pay us fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars to come to this event. So they're offsetting, that's, that's one, if it wasn't, then it'd be really difficult, I think.
Is your estimation that it'll be about the same money that we've had in other years with the influx of the fifteen thousand from the NRCA? Or will we have to add more money?
No, we've gotta add more money. But what we did is we come up with, they're projecting, I've already, even though that's eight thousand dollars I've got already that is committed to come in as a sponsor. And so out of that thirty thousand, which is about what it was, I'm talking round numbers, Phil has the numbers really broke down, and he projected that I would, we would come in with more sponsors, but also with that, and then we hadn't raised the ticket prices, and so we took, and that'll be presented to you to raise the ticket prices on, on Friday, Saturday, I believe it was, in the covered area, and then that covered and left a buffer. And it's like a dollar or two.
Dollar ticket more.
So when you take thirty thousand, you get fifteen-five, there's some other incentives that come in, and so a dollar on fifteen thousand or, but we're not gonna, on the Thursday, Friday, or Wednesday and Thursday, those others would bring in that extra money. That's how they put it together in the budget.
I'm of the opinion that you can apply for that through the RAPS tax, can you?
You know, we, we probably can, we've never applied for, we have for the facilities down there on the rodeo park. We have, Lane can talk about, we have-
Advertising and things like that.
Those are things, but we've never gone after prize money and those types of things.
I know the rodeo is very, very well-attended, and it's very, in the county, it's something that there is a lot of people that want to come to the fair and to the rodeo. And so as a result, I think it, it can qualify for even additional RAPS tax money, and then whatever else we wanna do. And so it's my opinion that we can cover what you're asking, and it would be my opinion that we should support it.
I agree.
I agree with that, too, I think we should support it.
Well, I appreciate that, and so as you look at it, and while you're in that supportive mood, you know where I'm coming. We could sell more tickets if you'd just find five million dollars to put those new grandstands in. I don't know what it is, it's, it's close to that, anything else. But that's the only way we can do it, is have more seats to sell without going out into the public to, okay, sponsors, but I appreciate all of you.
It's a great rodeo and a lot of fun.
Yeah, thank you, Mont.
Thank you.
Well, and I appreciate being able to work with Lamont and, and his crew, and it certainly, I don't have to worry about what goes on there and, because it's always building and growing, and my problem is taking care of his parking. But we've kinda worked on that, and we, we've come a long ways, which takes back into RAPS. We did get RAPS money this last year, so we were able to go out and really actively recruit organizations to help us with that. And so we, we pulled in, I think, a lot of you know that North Logan City has a CERT team, and so they're a good bunch of old boys that just really stepped up for us. They needed some, some funding, or could have used some funding, and so they stepped up for us, and they really helped with our parking situation. They were there twen, we actually had somebody there twenty-four-seven this time. And so when those contestants came in really early, you know, two in the morning, three in the morning, something like that, why, we were able to get them parked, keep things organized, so it boiled down to when we did have that on the slack night, or day, excuse me, we had twenty percent more participants in the slack than we've ever had before. Well, that's twenty percent more parking, and the year before, we were like, where are we gonna put them? We're just about starting to park them out on the, on the driveways and around the buildings, and so, anyway, we got that done. We were able to get everybody parked on site, I think, when they were talking RAPS, the other, Bart had that aerial picture, probably if you were here, was it two, two weeks ago? They showed that aerial picture, and we were, and so it looks good, but we can improve on that. And then during the other days of the, of the fair, we parked about three-hundred-and-fifty cars in that space that basically had only got maybe a hundred cars in there before or less. Of course, having the pond gone helped, but anyway, the rodeo has been greatly attended, and I appreciate the, the support there, that if there's some RAPS money to help cover up this new program, that would, you know, again, we're growing, and it's just, it's exciting to see. You know, as I travel around other places and, and just talk about when the, the thing comes up, the rodeo, why Cache County is recognized, not just in Utah, but rest surrounding states, as, well, yeah, you guys got one of the best rodeos. And so it's, it adds to the whole flavor. I guess to go on down, just to report the junior livestock this year, they did, this year, they had the, the full setup for the five-oh-one-C scenario, so there were more big businesses that were able to donate. So honestly, I was out of town, didn't meet the last junior livestock meeting to get the numbers, but we're just short of a million dollars between booths and live auction money, just shy of a million dollars. I mean, it's just been phenomenal. And so, you know, we're getting more youth that are coming into that. Consequently, next year, we're getting a little more tent space, but they're, you know, that's really workable, and, and it's been great to be able to expand that way. So we're, we're impacting the, the community in a really good way there. We had, you know, we can't create any more land for vendor space, we've got more requests for vendor space, but we've pretty well filled that up and still keep our, our country atmosphere of having the, the grass area open and, and some space to be able to utilize that, so, you know, we can't change that much. We're charging a little more for vendor space, but we're being a little more selective and letting them know, you know, we have a duplicate of this or that when it comes to food and things, and so I think the vendors appreciate that, but when they walked away, the vendors all had a smile on their face this year, they made a little more money. But that's also taken, in fact, we tried to, to really push the Wednesday and open up the whole fair on Wednesday, have the carnival running and everything, and we're not big enough to do that yet. It just, that day didn't work for the rest, for having the carnival, and the vendors, they didn't put anything in their pocket that day. It just, it, it was a loser as far as that side of it, so next year, we'll certainly still, you know, rodeo on Wednesday night, maybe some more, some entertainment on Wednesday afternoon, but we're not gonna push for the carnival and the vendors to be fully open on Wednesday. I know I could certainly have some input on that if you've, you know, wanna look at that a little differently and, and talk about it. The event center, we did have more quilts again, we're getting back to that, a few more quilts, we had more art, we had more photography. There's still a lot of space inside the event center that we could utilize, and, and Ron and those in the event center have been working really hard to help promote that. We're looking, I've been working really close with Farm Bureau to try to put together a, an education corner in there. They actually have a couple million dollars that are working with in Farm Bureau to do more ag promotion in, you know, both in schools and in communities like this, and so we're hoping to bring in more education, kind of interactive program inside the event center for next year, to utilize a little of that space that we've-
Armed Fork.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, there's actually another program they're, they're working with, but they're, anyway, something they're, they're working on for, to expand on that. The, the Monday night team doctoring really doesn't bother many people, but we've, we started two hours earlier and got done at midnight this time, and had the same number of participants, and so it's, it's turned into a great thing, they're, they're coming from a long ways to participate in that team doctoring event on, on Monday night. So it's just been a good add-on to the whole program, I think. The, the carnival, I, I didn't get that, that dollar figure in front of me, I should have, I guess I'd pull up my phone, I'd have it, but the carnival brought in a little more money, but we didn't have to do the, the, the tickets were all sold online, and so we didn't have to go out and have our computers out in different locations and, and pre-sales tickets, hard copies, we didn't have to chase that this year, so it certainly was a little easier on, on our staff there in the event center, Margaret that helps me with that, and so, but we still sold more tickets. So carnival was up a little bit. Entertainment, of course, we had the big Saturday night, but through the other nights, we had several other, and that RAPS money went to, to pay for a little higher grade, I guess, of, of entertainment on the stage there and on the lawn area, and we'll be working on that some more. But I think we're finding out there's some really good, when I say local, you know, within, you know, a hundred-mile radius, entertainment that I think fits our, our people, our valley, something we wanna promote, and so we'll, we'll push for that a little more as well. We'll see how Wednesday night we can plug into that, but that certain, that entertainment certainly hasn't hurt rodeo, 'cause they're still filling the bleachers and, yeah, if he gets five million for bleachers, I need that much for parking somewhere, so. Let's see, this.
Let me do Sam.
Yeah.
There's, I, I just, I guess from there on, I just wanna say thanks to all those that helped, I mean, tech, double T and the, and the tech guys, it just was smoother this year, you know? But you prep for that, you know, the, the Wi-Fi, the hard, the towers were different, the ticket sales just went smooth as far as I could see all the way through, and so they've just been, you know, it's all coming together a little more every year. The, we had a small animal barn, but that's all the counties that I've been visiting with, we just don't have the interest in rabbits and chickens anymore. So we're still looking to-
The interest is there to see and observe them, but the participation, it's not quite there.
Yeah, there aren't the growers, the producers.
Still a lot of undue circumstances that are-
Yeah, we've had two viruses that, that really hit, yeah, when you got, when you have to liquidate millions of chickens in the valley and then ask people to bring their chicken to the, to the fair, that, you know- and then ask people to bring their chicken to the, to the fair, that, you know. And the rabbits, we, there was a virus the year before. And so we haven't brought, got that all back together. So just to, I guess, I can't say enough about how supportive everybody's been in the county, all the different departments that, you know, I just show up during fair time. And they're just super supportive of everything. And it's just been great to work with that. I hope to be here again next year, the ninth through the 12th. And we'll just make it a little bigger, a little better. Any questions then?
I have a hard time believing that you just show up. I know how much work you go behind the scenes long before it starts.
Well, we have had several meetings already for that.
You have one thing that maybe you can help me because you're in those meetings. But I like to support the young people through booths and whatnot. And so I go on the website to make a boost. And I kind of like to do more than $50. And it wouldn't let me do more than a $50 boost.
Come to the sale.
And I was at the sale.
Buy more.
So anyway, I would really like, I would, worst of all, I want to know why you capped it at $50. And I would like to encourage that if somebody wants to boost one of the youth more than $50, that they don't have to go through and re-enter the name and do all that kind of stuff, that you have the right to, you can boost more than $50.
It would take quite a while for me to try to explain it. The committee, the livestock auction committee, has put a lot of time and effort into that to say why this and why that. We're there to get more dollars for the kids. And when we went to that, you know, limiting the boost, we ended up getting more auction money. And, and so I, you know, I can't lay that out in front of you right here. But the kind of thing that we saw was that Grandma and Grandpa, and when they were told they couldn't give $50, they had to come and buy an animal. And then they see that those animals are bringing in $300 and $500. Instead of boosting 50, they bought the animal. And came up with 500 rather than 50 for each of the kids. And in a short explanation, that seems to be what the committee found. When they went back through and, now, somebody who, you know, again, you're talking about kids in the neighborhood that you wanted to support. And yeah, that kind of is a hang-up. But in the end, we got more money. And, you know, there's a strategy there that seems to have worked.
The one thing that I heard, a lot of the people, when they ran into that, they just sent the check to the kid, you know, privately. And so you've got a bunch of that going on.
There was some of that.
There's no tax opportunity at all on those dollars. But that's fine.
Yeah, and there's always, you know, going to be some of that. But again, when you, when you went back and analyzed the whole thing, and the committee, the livestock committee, they took a lot of flack over that. But their numbers.
I rolled it pretty hard when I went in there and told them I couldn't get their computer program to work. They, I had everybody coming out of the office to see who was complaining. But anyway, if you can't, if you can't express your opinion, then we're.
Yeah. No, and I appreciate that. And I hope that, that we're, we're working on some other things to just make things flow smoother in the, in that side of it, and being able to do the booths. And I think, again, I, being, the auction side of it, I would much rather have Grandma and Grandpa there and I get to look them in the eye and coerce them just a little bit.
You get to mix them up so they don't know what they're bidding on. And pretty soon, you got more money coming in because you got them turned around, upside down. You've got this one here, you've got this here grandma bidding against this grandma. That's a pretty fun deal, isn't it?
Works well sometimes.
Just remember that I'm not going to go because I know this is going to take too long. Okay.
One thing I was hoping to come out, but what we run into a lot, was while you're doing that auction, you got the kids down there, you got this group, and you're hearing the price, right? And then you've got some of our, I'm just going to grab a handful. I'll miss some. I'll take Cash Valley Bank, IFA, Less Walk Tire, and then numerous others that are sitting there trying to maintain that market. Then over in behind the scenes, they find out after, they just bought that $500 lamb, but there was a $1,000 boost on it. Does that make sense? So they got 15,000. And so the people that are there really promoting and pushing it with a budget to try to spread out over 600 kids, kind of take the bad side of that. Does that make sense? And all I say to that is.
I've watched it for years, and it's interesting how some of those animals sell for the price they do. And it's just, just what you're saying.
Yep. And then some are right out front. You know, when they come in there, you know that lamb is going to bring 2,000 or 3,000.
Yep.
Is deer 5, 6, or 10?
If you was auctioning off a chicken for some of them, that'd go for $2,000.
Do the same thing.
Same thing.
Exactly.
Hey, that's an idea.
So maybe I'll take up more time, but I just thought.
If that's all, I'll leave you to your main business. And again, just appreciate everybody's support.
We thank you. Yeah, thank you.
I think as a council, we want you to know that we really appreciate all the hard work you do. I think we should give them a round of applause.
Very good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Scott, I can't believe that you went 18 years and never got up and have to, have to mention what's on your mind. Have you got anything to add, Scott?
He was about ready to get up until you started talking.
I know.
Thank you. Our next item of business is the Children's Justice Center, VOCA and VAWA grants, Terrell Warner. Come on up, Terrell.
Comes out there as a wildcat. I don't look that.
I'm ready. Okay. I actually have a PowerPoint. This, I won't take a long time. How do I switch between, to the next slide? Ooh, that looks kind of handy.
Pull down on that little wheel.
Okay. Okay. So I kind of wanted to just go through really briefly the grant funding that we have at the county attorney's office for victim services. We have a VOCA grant. We have a VOCA SaaS grant, set aside funding. We have VAWA investigations and prosecution. We have Cache County that clearly gives us a great deal of support. We have a first responder grant and a Bear River Health Department grant. I just listed off the different types of crimes that has not changed. We do a lot with child abuse, sexual assault, domestic violence, aggravated assault. We get involved with child custody issues, if it's custodial interference, things like that. And the Children's Justice Center, the main, the main funding is, is we have a VOCA main grant, the Attorney General's Office, Friends of the CJC in Cache County. That's not in any particular order.
Terrell, will you remind us what VOCA and VAWA stand for?
So VOCA is the Victims of Crime Act. It allows us to work with victims of crime, of any type of crime, personal or property crime. So when we think of personal crime, let's say I beat up Bart. That's a personal crime. Let's say I go in and embezzle Bart's money out of his account. That is a property crime. So we deal with both personal and property crimes with VOCA. With VAWA, it's violence against women and children. However, they've changed that over the last few years. And it is allowed, anybody can be served under VAWA. But it's specifically for sexual assault-type cases, family violence, domestic violences, stalking injunctions, things like that. There's a relationship there. So VAWA is for our prosecutors and our investigators. We have two investigators and two prosecutors on that grant. The Children's Justice Center, that is where we do our child abuse interviews. And we connect them to services. Now, let's see if I go down. So I just wanted to briefly run over the goals for VAWA. To, to, the immediate health and safety of victims, reported to law enforcement or not, is critical. We do a lot of safety planning. We do crisis intervention. We provide support. And we have emergency needs. Now, I will mention that with ARPA funds, it does need to be tied to a law enforcement case number. So we aren't just assisting anyone. We only assist those that have a police interaction, DCFS interaction, and there's a case number with it. We have assisted with the ARPA funds that you all gave us. We have assisted more than 200 victims since May of 2022. That's a lot. And we're continuing to see that on a daily basis. And we also assist victims participating through the criminal justice system. We assist victims with their victim impact statements, figuring out restitution. And we do the notification of rights in court hearings and things like that. We have three victim advocates that are assigned primarily, that primarily where they are is in court. One to Judge Walsh, one to Judge Cannell, and one to Judge Fonzbeck. And we have, years ago, we used to have prosecutors covering crimes and victim advocates covering crimes. We don't do that now. We have a prosecutor assigned to a court. We have a victim advocate assigned to a court. And if Mike was here, he'd tell you he has a public defender assigned to a court. And the majority of those cases are handled by that team. We also deal with personal advocacy and emotional support in assisting victims with resources, both community-based as well as system-based resources, to make sure that they can heal. And then we also deal with reparations, which is the state's program that assists victims of personal crime with out-of-pocket expenses. So let's say they have a therapy bill, or they have an ER bill. The state has a program to assist victims of that with their out-of-pocket expenses. Ambulance rides can be really expensive. They cover a lot of ambulance rides. Oh, wait, now I went the wrong way. Okay. We have two primary goals at the CJC. We assess the mental health of children interviewed at the CJC. And then we provide therapy and treatment. This is one thing I'd like to say that's a little different, and I'm not sure I agree with this. And I struggle, I've struggled with this for a long time. We have children interviewed, and then right after they do a suicide ideation screening. We have found that that suicide ideation screening is really high. Over 80% of children disclose some sort of suicide ideation between the ages of 6 and 17 that are shown at the center. What we've done is decided to do a follow-up. That number has drastically dropped. I'm just not sure why the state has us do that right after an interview. Somebody has just disclosed these heartbreaking things, and oh, then we want you to take a suicide ideation screening. But when we have done it 10 days or 14 days later, we find that number is much different. With prosecution and investigation, there are two primary roles of VAWA for a prosecutor and investigator. We do the, we have the immediate health and safety of a victim and to hold the perpetrators responsible. Our new county attorney, Dane Murray, he and I went to a conference in Texas a couple of years ago. And he came back and implemented a strangulation protocol that's used throughout the state. And pretty much, I think, just about every county uses it now. We've given it out to just about every county in the state. But our county is, is leading the way on the strangulation protocol. And what we have found is that if there is strangulation, we need to take a different look at the way the case is prosecuted and the way it's investigated. That law enforcement, I'm not going to go into what they do. But there are some unique things that they do to investigate cases in order to hold perpetrators accountable. We also have a lethality assessment. That's a 10-question lethality assessment that law enforcement gives out on scene. And depending on how they score, it will determine how we proceed with prosecution. It's also used to connect victims to allied agencies such as The Family Place and CAPSA. I also wanted to talk about the first responder mental health program. This is something that law enforcement approached the county attorney's office about two years ago. And this county has been very, our county council has been very supportive of that. We debrief after all major incidences. It just, it just seems to be really helping our first responders. So for example, we had an infant that died due to SIDS a couple of weeks ago. It was very tragic. It is, it is awful to look at a brand-new baby. And we brought in the 911 dispatcher. We brought in the first responders. We brought in the EMS people and our crisis therapist, and we debriefed that incident. We do that after every major incident. It just helps our first responders in processing what's happening. Now, with ARPA funds, we also are going to bring in a COPPS training called The Traumas of Law Enforcement for our first responders. It, it is an absolutely fabulous training. I went last year. I was one of 10 or 12 that this board, that this council paid for, gave us some funding. And we went to a COPPS training, and it was by far the best training I'd had in 30 years. We'll be bringing that here. And we'll be inviting you all to attend. It's two and a half days. And then our Bear River Health Department program. This is, we are now dealing an anti-substance information packet and review at intake with the CJC. What we have found with the SAMSHA assessment is that kids that have access to alcohol, or drugs, or vaping in their homes run a higher risk of using those substances. So we're informing parents about that. We have a lot of kids in school that are vaping. We know that that's really dangerous. And so we're talking to parents at the CJC and out on scene about substances found in their home. We also will be bringing in another vaping drug prevention for youth community summit next April. And I think, oh, this is my one concern I wanted to bring up. We have seen a reduction in VOCA and VAWA funding. How that has been funded over the years, Senator Hilliard was key in bringing this in. And there was a surcharge added to every defendant's, let's say that I assault Bart, and I'm charged with an A misdemeanor. And at the end of my time, when I'm sentenced, I'm going to have a fine and a surcharge. Those surcharges, for more than 30 years, covered a significant part of victim services programs in this state. Likewise, it was done on the federal level as well. So if you think of Martha Stewart being charged and convicted, or the varsity blues players that were charged and convicted, they paid millions of dollars in fines and surcharges. Those fines and surcharges were going into a pot to assist victims of crime. A few years ago, we became a kinder and gentler group of people. And we are now giving community service in lieu of fines and surcharges. Now, that may be a really good thing, but it's really hurting the victim programs. And we have seen a significant reduction in VOCA and VAWA funding over the last two years that will carry into the next two years. We reached out to some of our legislative delegation. I met with the governor, and he said, "Do you have any ideas?" And I said, "No." He said, "Well, think of something." So I decided to come up with an idea that would solve, hopefully, solve a little bit of this problem for the state. It's not just for Cache County. It's for the state. Representative Peterson is sponsoring this. I believe Representative Ivory is helping him. And what it would be, would be to put a small surcharge on every infraction, C misdemeanor, AB misdemeanor, and felony. It used to be 85%. So let's say that my fine is $1,000 for beating up Bart. That's an $850 surcharge. So I'm, by the time I'm done, I'm looking at $1,850. So, and then the state's trying to get this collected, and people don't pay. But what if it was just a $5 or $10 fine on an infraction or a C misdemeanor? I actually talked to a lot of law enforcement, prosecution, victim advocates, and defendants, former defendants. I talked to at least 15 of them about this idea, and they, they really liked the idea. So Representative Peterson is putting language into a proposed bill to add a surcharge that can't be waived, similar to the court surcharge that the sheriff gets. It wouldn't be able to be waived, and it would go to the victims of crime programs in the state. It would bring in several million dollars, is the way we calculated that out. So I'll keep you apprised of that. We're hoping that, that we'll be able to get something like that passed. And it won't be too much of a difficulty for defendants. Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Thanks, Terrell.
Well, I thank you for your time. And I so appreciate the support that you give victims of crime in the valley and our programs. I'm so grateful for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrell.
Thanks, Terrell.
Thank you, Terrell. All right. Very good. We have no Board of Equalization Matters. I thought somebody was throwing something at me. All right, let's go, move on to Item 10(c), a resolution adopting the 2023 Cache County Budget. All right, let's go, move on to item 10C, a resolution adopting the 2023 Cache County budget. Cameron, do you want to help us with anything, or do you want?
I have a question.
Okay.
What, um, detail, account detail are we going off of? I, I'm confused because the document, the resolution that we have in our packet, I'm not, I'm not sure that it's seen the changes. We just have the tentative budget amendment by the council, and that, that resolution doesn't have all the, the de, the account details that we've been looking at before as we make these decisions. Can you help with that, Cameron?
Um, I can try to. I'm not sure, um, which account de, I don't mean that yet.
Most recent one.
Um, I, I sent out a, a report. Essentially, it was a printout of all of our account detail, and that should match the, uh, resolution. You had, uh, we've discussed over the last two meetings, um, changes that the council would like to have for that, but I hadn't, uh, implemented those because I don't see if that was a vote to implement those, um, yet. And so I was kind of anticipating that tonight, those decisions would be made final. And, uh, if the budget's adopted, it'd be adopted with the proposed changes to the budget. Um, and then I can update that, uh, resolution. But I was, I was not clear that those had been adopted by council to change those into the resolution at this time. It was, it was, it was talked about. There was no vote, I guess is what I'm saying.
So the account detail, Ben, the latest one is October 28th? Is that right?
Um, yes, I believe that is correct. So then there should be, uh, the document I emailed out on November 10th that is the short list of changes that we've made since then, or that have been proposed, but they haven't been adopted as changes.
Thank you. With all these different documents, it sometimes get confusing as to what exactly we're approving and what we're looking at.
Yeah, agree.
I wanted to be sure that I knew what that was.
All right, counsel. Any questions, concerns?
Well, we beat this one up pretty well.
We have some changes.
He has some changes.
Yeah. Um, let's see here. Oh, I wanted to make sure that we got added in, and maybe it was in, in the one that you did, Cameron, but that we added in the $20 for the, um, planning commission? Did you get that in there?
Actually, my understanding is, I went back and looked at that, is there already was, uh, $50 for a planning commission? That, that had already been put in the budget from the beginning, so we didn't need to make an amendment for that one.
Wasn't it, we can only do 20?
Yeah, we're limited.
We're limited.
Are you limited at 20? So we'll have surplus funding in that account. Because that, that was funded.
Policy we'd have to change to, for that, though, is it?
Yeah, we should change it. We don't want to get in trouble.
I think it should be explicit, yeah.
We'd have to change the policy because that's probably been adopted.
Yeah, and, and I don't, I don't have that document, but I think.
Change of the budget, then reflect on that policy.
No, the budget allows that policy to change, I guess, if you, so, but if you don't change it, then it would still be the same amount. And like I said, we would just have surplus funding in the account.
Oh, they won't accidentally get paid the wrong amount, will they?
Uh, no, I, I don't believe so. It would, it, so the process would have to show that, um, we, we have, we have that in place right now that the amount is the $15, and until we have something that changes that, it would just continue.
The 15 or 5050? I'm confused.
I guess I am as well. I apologize. So until we receive a document to change the amount that is being paid right now, uh, it won't change. So even with more budget available, the amount won't change until we receive that direction.
So it's staying at 15 right now?
The, the adoption of the budget doesn't change automatically the amount that would be paid.
So what document do we need to get in place to be able to pay them the $20?
Right.
So I'm not 100% sure of what policy is out there, but I, I'm thinking the council would need to adopt that policy, either by, I would assume by resolution, but I, maybe attorney's office would have to look into that for us.
Yeah, I think that, it would require a resolution just to, just so that everything's clear.
To, to clarify that? Um, so I am a fan of including account details with budgets. When we've done the budget opening, I have always asked for that, just because I think it's important to have that as part of the record. So this one, then, from 1028 would be the one?
Yeah, that one plus the email on November 10th. There was, um, and we reviewed that at our last meeting, but there was, and it was updated, um, on the 10th and then sent out to everyone. There's seven items on there, um, the last item being, uh, the proposal to increase council salaries.
So none of the things we've talked about have been changed in the resolution or the tentative budget amendment? We've got to go back to that email now again.
Okay.
Well, and so I was, I was personally just not comfortable changing that where it was a discussion, but not something the council voted to say, "Make those changes," so.
That makes sense.
They're, they're still in that amendment document.
Well, it's, it's hard to see where we're at as far as with the changes that we've talked about. It's kind of hard to see where we're at to be able to even vote on this.
I understand, okay.
And so, um, you know, with, I was hoping that we'd see some of those changes we talked about, and this is how it's going to affect the budget, so that we could look at it and make sure that we're still within line. I know, uh, we did request a couple other departments to come and talk with this.
Yeah.
Uh, we got a couple emails, so, and I thought it'd be nice if they come and talk with us, uh, about, you know, the people's dollars. But even at that, it's, we seem to be as far away from this budget as I've ever seen, you know. There seems to be a lot of confusion now in this process, so.
Is there a way that we could bring up that email that, uh, Cameron sent us with the, the changes, and let's just talk about each one of the changes and make a vote on it now? Is that the process that we need to make?
But how does that affect the overall?
Right.
Picture, the big picture.
Yeah, you got to be able to take it out or add it.
So none of the changes that, um, we presented changed revenue amounts. So if we added expense in, it was offset against fund balance. If we took expense out, it was, uh, money was added back to fund balance essentially. So revenue was held constant. So, for example, the, uh, first item on that list is the, uh, removal of the payoff of the bond that was related to the road facility. That created two, two issues, really. So we, I took, uh, the, the amount of the payment out, 11,000, or, excuse me, 11 million, 11 and a half million, that was appropriated from fund balance. It no longer is, and so that increases that position. There was then a transfer to our debt service fund to make those payments. Those, those transfers have been eliminated. The payment, uh, transaction was eliminated. Um, but our debt service fund is, is only funded from the general fund, so there's nothing really impact there. If we make a payment, it's funded from the general fund. If we don't, no funds come over, so there's no change otherwise to the debt service fund. Uh, the one other change it did make, however, though, is that we, we, instead of paying the full amount off, now we have an annual payment, and that annual payment is paid for from the municipal services fund, uh, through the road tax. And so that payment then had to be added back in. Those funds, in a sense, were already being used then by the road department for other purposes, and, and we actually even put other expenses back into the road department. So, so that payment then reflected a reduction of, or a use of our fund balance. And so that, that fund balance amount in municipal services, um, that, when it started out over 2 million and then was carved down to a quarter million, is back up over 2 million to put those expenses back in there. But it is balanced with the use of the fund balance.
I thought we talked about a change in revenue. Paul, didn't we talk about a change in sales tax revenue coming in that we wanted to reduce that estimate?
Uh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Cameron.
I'm sorry. So, so yes, and that was on the original amendment document. At our last meeting, uh, we talked about whether that would, uh, would we, uh, realize those revenues or not realize those revenues, and that we discussed the possibility that that could be an ebb and flow that was against the fund balance. And so, um, I was told to take those out. And so, um, what I presented on the 8th then had that there, but then I amended that on the 10th and sent it back out for comment.
Thanks for explaining that. Um, going, going back to that, those, uh, account details from the 28, if we pass that, is that going to include what it does, what we have in? I guess I'm the only one that has a paper document, but it goes through, and it has, like, every department has, has something about a statement of what they do and stuff like that. Would that be included? Is that, is that to be included in our final budget, or was that just?
Um, it, it was not, it can be if you want that attached to the.
No, I was going to move to strike that because I'm concerned that that would some, could somehow be seen as policy, and I'm not sure that we're prepared to make that policy.
Yeah, so, so at this point, no, it, it's not included, so I, I misunderstand, but you might.
Can I go ahead? I didn't want to, like, take over and just keep talking. Um, I have some questions still, just with your budget for the elections. Since you're here, maybe you can help us understand because I'm still confused on it, and I'm not sure if I have the right. The, the numbers I looked at were the September numbers, but what was confusing to me was that we had the municipal election services, uh, in your budget for 193,000. But there were other things that were listed that still appeared, I mean, that was an expense, but there are other things that appear to be expenses that should be covered by the municipal contracts, including, I, I didn't understand the $10,000 for the seasonal employee because that, that's, you said in your email, that would be in the contracts, but yet it's listed as an expense out of county dollars, um, as well as material supplies and services of 77,600. Communications, which I assume would be like sending out mailers or something from municipalities of 3,600. Fuel for 2,000, uh, supplies and maintenance for 1,000, and non-capitalized equipment for 3,500. When I add those numbers up, if I did my math correctly, I came up with 105,000. That seemed to me that 105,000 should be covered by contract, and wondered if you could help explain how you structured your budget and why that would be counting county funds paying for those items.
Yes. So the, let's see, 193,000 is offset. I'm trying to find the right. Sorry, I wasn't.
Sorry, I just threw this out. I should have called you, but it didn't dawn on me. Sorry about that.
The municipal election includes, so we have a cost estimate of $2.15 per voter, and we estimate 50,000 voters times two. So we come up with, uh, I believe it's $215,000 worth of revenue. Now, I want to make clear that if we don't actually use, if we don't hold an election for a city, we're not going to use the money. It's going to go back to the county. I want to make that very clear. But that is only for specific items. I'm trying to make sure. So the 482 is going to just be the items related to the envelopes and things like that only for the cities. The 10,000 will also be charged back because if you see down below, uh, if you see in the, in the, um, revenues, there is a revenue offset of 215,000. So you'll add, I can't, I, uh, again, I don't have the items all in front of me, um, but 193 there, and then you have, um, $10,000 for the part-time, which will be charged back to the cities. So that's 203, and then you have other items that will be charged back, such as, um, well, I'd have to take a look at my exact items, but ballot and ballot paper, things like that, um, some of the election supplies. Uh, but it comes out that costs, if you add in the items that I, again, I, um, it would come out to 215. So the true cost, if you were to compare budgets, and I was working on this just a minute ago, just at the high level. In 2021, we spent 808,000, and now with that, we did have some built-in, about $100,000 for equipment, which we, we spent, and I'm very grateful for that, just so you know.
What year was that, Jess?
2021.
In 2021.
And then this year, we spent, uh, or, excuse me, I'm sorry, we spent 660 in 2021, not 800. Jeez. I don't want that one going on record. And then, uh, in 2022, we spent 802. These are all lower than 2020, just, I don't have that total, but I know that we've spent less than 2020. And then 2023, we've, uh, we've requested 542, uh, for elections. Now, is that correct? So essentially, what the number is, is you reduce that by 215 because it's an offset budget. So in 2021, you could offset that by 100,000 because that's the amount that the cities paid us back in 2021. So you would say we spent out of the county funds 560,000, whereas in 2023, we project 315,000 essentially, after being reimbursed by the cities.
Okay, I've, I've got a question.
Yeah.
These are estimates as to if you were to do the elections for the, the municipalities throughout the whole county, right?
Yes.
Have you got the contracts in place so you know what those costs are?
We don't start contracting until January, so what?
Then why would we put it, why, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm having a hard time putting it in the budget.
Yeah.
Until you get some contracts, and then we say, "Okay, here's the contract. This is what it's going to cost. This is what we'll make," and then we go to a budget opening to cover that. And then we know exactly what we're talking about, rather than just pitching hole a bunch of money and, and then say, "Oh, if we, if we don't use it, we'll give it back."
I'll be honest, you don't know the cost of an election until it's over. There's a lot of variables.
But the contract's the contract, right?
Well, the contract is based on actual usage. And so what we do is we estimate, um, what would happen at a certain amount if every city contracted us with us at this amount. And so if inflation goes up next year, we will be back to say, "Hey, we'll need this." But the good thing is because we signed the contracts in the new year, what we do is we try to wait until just before the ele, not just before, but enough time that we can lock in our rates with our vendors, and we can also give the cities a good estimate. In 2021, we were able to give them an, an estimate within one penny. And so we feel very comfortable at this rate. With the rate of inflation, I mean, everything's up in the air. It's been very difficult just to get a garage door repaired out at the ballot center because it, it broke, and so we get it, and our estimates are way off on what it might cost. But we, based on what our vendors have told us, we're comfortable with this as of right now. And I understand the variable, but my commitment to the council, and hold me to it, is that if we don't need the money, we really can't use that money out of municipal services for anything else. And it would be weird if we did, and so I, I think, you know, we're not going to use it. All the rest of that funding in there is really going to benefit the county. And so you have things like, uh, rent for the airport ballot center. You have hardware maintenance or hardware, um, contracts that we would have to pay independently uh, of any municipal election happening or federal election. So all the rest of this benefits the county and would have to be paid no matter what. And to prepare for the 2024 election, we have to use some funding. It's not a lot, but a few thousand at least to get ready for the 2024 election because we know it's going to be huge. Uh, I sound like, jeez, that was the Donald Trump thing to say, but, um, it is going to be big. We know we had 93% turnout in 2020. We anticipate above that. Every year, uh, of a presidential, we break records. And so my guess is maybe 95%. And so we have to start spending some money on ballot paper. There's other items that we need as well, and it's all on display at the ballot center, and we have stocks of what we have and need and printer. It, it's all very expensive, so.
I'd really like to see a, a printout of what you're charging for those municipalities as compared to what you see as county, county things that we need to do, that we have to do anyway, even if you weren't doing any contracts, because, I'm sorry, this still doesn't make sense to me. It seems to me like the money should come in from those municipalities, and it should pay for these items. It doesn't seem to me like we need to put the money in there ahead of time and then do this charging back thing, and then what? do this charging back thing and then what happens with, with that money that you didn't charge back? And that doesn't make sense to me. To me, that seems like we're overspending. It makes more sense to me to do it the other way. So I'm not, I'm not catching on to why this, it's structured this way.
Without due respect, I think every department kind of structures it like that. If you anticipate a grant, it has to be input into the budget before you can use a grant. So then you come and request the funding so that if you get the grant, then it's there. And if we don't contract with the city, you can remove it next year. I think that's something important to know. I don't, I'm okay with that.
I, I, I mean, frankly, it would be, it, it would be imprudent to not budget for s, an expense that you know is going to come. You don't know exactly how much perhaps, but to, to put a zero dollar number in there and then have to come back and do a budget adjustment, that, then we're, then we don't have a feel at all for what our final budget numbers is going to look like as far as balancing the budget and things like that because we haven't allowed for anticipated costs and anticipated revenues. So I, I, I think he's doing it appropriately because it's based on historical uh things and uh and, and it should be budgeted for.
You know, when I was sitting in with Jess and he was showing this to me, he was showing me the, the amount of money that I asked him, why are you spending more money next year than where this year? We don't have an election and that's when, you know, the city theme comes up. And he explained to me that we have to do X amount of, uh, work for the cities. And that needs to be budgeted, but in the same time, and I don't know if that, you explained that to me, but seems like if we have to budget money to do this work for the city and they're gonna reimburse it, then we should also budget the income that they'll have to reimburse us for. And so then as a result, it won't be near as high as what it looks like. It don't look to me like we list the revenue. Is that correct, Jess?
That's correct. It's a, the offset drops that by two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Yeah, and that was the thing that I can't quite understand how you budget that is if, if you have to budget that amount of money to do the elections for the cities and then when you've got it all done and you have a, a total as to what all you did for the cities, then you have a bill to give to them and then re, reimburse it, then we really didn't spend that money. And I don't know how, it, it kinda looks like you're gonna spend a lot of money, but by the end of the year, you have it back. So why is it not set that we, we budget for it, but then we also list the revenue that's gonna come back? So it becomes a wash up. That's the thing that I think it's hard for him to do to be able to show the revenue when he still don't know what it's gonna for sure be.
Well, the, the revenue should be part of the contract. If you, if you project five hundred thousand dollars of uh income or of rev, of a cost, you better have five thousand dol, a hundred thousand dollars of income to counter that. And that's got, that should show up. So it is a wash to the system. Then you can budget it correctly, but I'm not seeing that.
Yeah, here's what confuses me. I get that, Carla. I appreciate that and Jess, I appreciate your explanation. So help me understand because you have a line in here that says municipal election services, one hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. And you have those other things that I read out, that I read off that seem to me and, and from looking historically at things to, to include things that, those include items that would be in election services. So I'm confused as to why everything isn't just in the municipal election services line item. Why we have these other line items that could include?
I mean, I would love to put everything in there, but it wouldn't be truthful. Uh, the reality is, is that we have to spend money on county issues. So for instance, we have budgeted to do a voter ID or we have voter ID cards that the county has required. So we have fifteen thousand dollars budgeted for that. That's just a requirement. We spend that every year. In fact, we may go over, especially in a year like this. And so everyone who registers to vote gets a confirmation card. And then if you change addresses, you get another one and each one of those costs funding. We have, we budgeted, we're hopeful that we can do another voter roll maintenance in preparation for the twenty twenty-four election. The reason for that is that we saw a significant decrease. We were down in the two percent when we, when we sent out the primary election ballots. We saw when we didn't send that out, we saw an increase which cost us more money. So it's a wash because you're sending out a very cheap postcard. But if you don't send that out, then you're paying a higher amount to send out like a dollar envelope to thousands of people who don't even receive it. So our goal is to have as close to zero people or zero households receive a ballot that they shouldn't. And in order to do that, we budgeted an annual voter roll maintenance mailer at ten thousand. And we know that we were at nine thousand this year for one, so we projected ten thousand dollars next year. And so that really helps the county more than, just as much as it helps the city. So it's, every item is, so let, I'll just go through it. Twenty thousand dollars for annual ESNS hardware and maintenance. Signature verification, ten thousand. That's charged back to the city. DS two hundreds, twenty-two hundred. That's a cost of the county. Poll pads, four thousand. That's a cost of the county that we have to pay. And we would be paying these no matter what if there wasn't an election. Document shredding, two thousand. We, we have got, we've got a hundred thousand documents that we're going to have to shred next year. We have not shredded the twenty twenty election because of a lawsuit. We're hoping that that gets finalized this, this coming year, but we have hundreds of thousands of documents and it's going to cost a tremendous amount of money to shred those because we have all those ballots.
All that's not built into those costs contracts?
The city doesn't pay for that because those were federal elections.
Okay, but even if the city election, it would be?
Well, we.
Or you just give them this?
That's a good point. We can build that in, but.
Well, the cost of an election is the cost of an election. So.
Yes.
All those details, the counties should not have to pay for all those within the city election.
Yeah, and, yes, you're correct. Yeah. We also, but we're talking, we don't have to shred those yet and that will be the, the cost for the federal election is significantly higher to shred those documents than it is for the city. So it, it's uh, light off when it comes to the, but we'll, that's a good point. I'm going to make a note of that to build in. Rent for the airport, we have to pay that anyway. Nine hundred dollars a year. That's built into the contract. Copier maintenance, fifteen hundred. We have to have that for our printing, for all of the documents that we do for elections. That's a county cost. Setup fee for election vendor, that's built in for the cities to pay. Election supplies, thirty-five hundred. That's a cost we have to pay because we're getting prepared for our next election constantly. Paper and ballot, paper, two thousand. We need that. It's twenty-eight cents a piece. So I could go down, I can give you a breakdown. These are all costs that are just general election items. We haven't said like birthday cakes or anything like that in here. We cut out all of the fluff as much as we could and that's why we were able to cut out a hundred thousand dollars from.
I wasn't worried about birthday cakes, Jess. I was trying to understand what the cost sharing was between municipalities and the county and that, and to ensure that municipalities are paying
Their fair share.
For the election. Yeah, I guess their fair share. It's a catchphrase, but wanted to make sure that they're paying the election services that the county provides rather than the county, um, putting any of that bill.
Yeah, so no, I, I, I think that's a very fair question and I'm very grateful for all that the county council has done to help us with the elections, just so you guys are aware. But take that number, take out two hundred and fifteen thousand. A lot of it's going to be staffing costs. The reality is, is um, the other stuff, a lot of it. So you're going to have a lot of things that are like, uh, maintenance fees that we have to pay by contract. We have state contracts that we're obliged to. And then the other one is staffing. And I, we can only charge the real, the real cost by state law, the real costs associated with a municipal election. And so that's, it's all.
With staffing, I have a question too, cause in your email, you indicated that the, the part-time, I think it's sixty-nine thousand roughly.
Mm-hmm.
Was for scanning documents?
No, we use them when they're not, so essentially what I was trying to convey there is we have election staff and if they have downtime, we use them for functions that directly benefit the county in other ways.
Asked me to come and talk to you.
So, so I, that was a little bit unclear.
I was concerned that maybe that should've been in a different budget. So that's my question. Okay. Thank you, Jess.
Is there any way of changing the budget contracting for the cities so that it ties in better with the budgeting process or what? Or is that?
I think, I can, I think we can show an offset somewhere.
Well, I, Nolan, I'll just say this and I've been pushing for this all year long. To, to make sure, number one, you know, in our, in our audit committee, uh, for a long time. And I had back and forth with the previous county attorney, uh, who saw things, I think, differently than any other financial professional I've ever talked to. But this, this county has an ordinance and we budget by expenditure line. Transfer more than a thousand dollars between expenditure lines. That's supposed to come to the council. This budget really has not had any expenditure lines until we had to fight tooth and nail to get them. Internal controls on this budget and spending at the department level has been problematic and I think will continue to be. So if this is supposed to be the most transparent budget in history, that's an overstatement by leaps and bounds. I think this council should see stuff at the expenditure level. We should budget by expenditure level item. Because it gets to what you're, what everybody's talking about here. Here's where the funds come in, in this account for these services and here's where it goes out. The fact that we're not doing that is a problem. And I have fought that, fought that, fought that all year long and been pushed back at every step of the way. And that's all I'm gonna say about this budget today. It's ridiculous.
Well, I don't think, after we're sitting here talking of the budget, about the budget, I don't think we can really move it forward until we have Cameron redo totals after we have taken the money out that we said we didn't wanna tire the debt. When he takes that out and he takes several of those other things that we have asked him to take out and give us another total, I don't think we really know where we're at.
Cardi A.
So I'm not sure how we do an ordinance and that Cameron is authorized to go and do that and then present it to us. Somebody that understands this stuff better than I do, but we do need to get Cameron to do those kind of things that he wrote down that we wanted. We wanted him to take out of the budget and things we wanted to add back into the budget. Till we do that, we don't have enough total here to know where, what change we have done and what we wanted to do with the budget. And so I don't know, Cameron, can you help us?
I'm working on it right now.
I, I really, I want, for example, when I look at each one of these departments, each one of these funds, whatever it may be, I want them broke down as to how much is going to, for example, uh, salaries, wages. How much is going to travel? How much is going, I wanna see all of that.
It's there.
That has been lost or gone. I'm sure it's somewhere.
Attached. That's the problem. It's not attached to the resolution.
It's not attached to any of this stuff. So you, you know, any changes that we made, you can't really see it because there's some of those that, yes, I, I wanna, I want to see some cuts in some area. But right now, alls I see is a big general number.
So just to know, I, I think Dave, to your point, I'll give an example on the, on the budget, right? If you say, um, we can pull it up and, and you say, well, we gotta cut, right? You got a lot of, you got a lot of businesses that have to, have to cut. And figure out, okay, do we need to get rid of staff or how do we do it? So I'm just, we'll, we'll pick on the council here. The council's proposed twenty twenty-three budget is three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Well, let's say we wanna cut that by ten grand. Well, we can go in and say it's gonna be three forty-six and we're gonna go to three thirty-six. Well, where, where did that money get pulled from? Are we all gonna take a pay cut? Does our assistant not get their health insurance? Does it come out of our travel budget? Where does that ten grand get cut? But if you saw it by expenditure account, you can say travel's fifteen grand. Well, guess what? Next year, we're gonna go to Zoom meetings rather than travel, take out ten grand. And that's how you do this budget.
Exactly. Exactly. And that's what I, that's what I hope to see. For us to make a sound decision.
And know for sure exactly what we're voting on.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And know what people get to spend on because, you know, I mean, you look at that and you're, you're talking about some, some offices have millions of dollars in them. Some of them have hundreds of thousands and some of those that have hundreds of thousands are double what they were two years ago.
If we, if we approve these general numbers and what that basically then says, okay, go to those departments, then they go find those different little areas. We may have a lot of employees, maybe, I don't know. They might get hurt. They might not have some you know, some opportunities or something like that rather than, uh, maybe some, like I say, travel or something like that could be limited just to do the savings. You know, I guess what I'm saying is I want, if we're in charge of the finances, we need to know and see exactly where those finances are going in each of those departments so that we can then say, no, no, yes, no, yes. And or cut this by this much and then you make, then they make the budget work. That's, that's how it's always been in life and it, and to me, it's everywhere I've gone. I've always been given a budget. You live within that budget rather than move it all around till it, everyone's confused.
The one concern that supports what you're saying is I was visiting with Matt after our road meeting. I said, Matt, what actually have you got that you're gonna be able to do and what are the things that you're not gonna be able to do? And he said, I'm really not sure. He said, it appears to me that I submitted a budget, then they decided to cut about a million dollars out of it. And then the council has said we need better. And so he says, I've got some money put back in. But he says, I do not know as today as to what I have. And so we need to, you know, we need to, especially in the road department, we need to see what we've, we have given in budget for. And that needs to be a little bit specific so that we know if we're adequately taking care of the roads. We don't wanna get behind on the roads. We don't have to build new roads, but we don't wanna get behind on the ones that need to be maintained. I'm on the road committee with Nolan and I don't think we really know what, what we can do yet, do we?
No, cause the chip and seal was affected, but now it's, it's back, so.
But I don't know that. I look at five point seven seven five. What does that go to?
I don't know. I know he said he got some equipment put back in, so apparently some equipment got cut now. It's maybe back in. So we need to know a little bit more detail, at least in that budget and probably all the others.
In every budget.
Line items in those departments.
In every budget. That's our duty. That's our responsibility is to oversee that, make sure that people's money is spent wisely and you know, exactly where stuff is going.
I don't think we can do anything more with the budget with what information we've got. And so if we've gotta get this passed in the next little while, I'm suggesting, Madam Chair, that we we give Cameron adequate time to get that to us and then we're gonna have to come back into a, another meeting. Is that?
Yes, I.
I don't know. You know, we only got so many days before January's here.
I agree with that. I was just thinking because we do have some confusion on a lot of the line items. Who here is on the budget committee? Okay. Would it be appropriate to have Cameron go through all those line items? Call a budget committee meeting, have us go through that with him and then, um, bring, once we feel satisfied with what's there, then present it to the council again? Or what's your feelings on that?
I think that's the only option we got.
Yeah, and I think when you presented the council, I would still love for expenditure accounts to be in the budget that we vote for so that it is abundantly clear to everyone that that is how the money was allocated within each department. So you don't have people spending things that were not contemplated.
Okay. Um, past that, when we meet as a budget committee, then could we have a special workshop like you mentioned? Have Cameron bring that to the whole council and then go from there. What's your feelings on that?
Didn't somebody say we've gotta pass this budget by the first? Didn't somebody say we've got to pass this budget by the first of December, is that not right?
We, it has to be passed in county code by December 15.
December 15, so we've got a lot of work to do within the next couple of weeks.
We have to do it ASAP, because the executive does have a right to veto a line item, and then, according to code, if he does a veto, and he has to give an explanation why he vetoed it, it has to come back to council, we have to consider it, and then take a vote on it.
And to that point, Gina, how does he veto a line item when there's no line items in the budget that we're getting, that he's given to us?
That's a perfectly good question.
Can you do that, Cameron, is that, you know, you got a new employee, are you going to use him to help you?
I didn't know that. Yes, no, actually, I can have those changes incorporated into the budget tonight, I've just about, actually got that done, and I can send that out to you. As far as reformatting a, um, account detail report, I could have that ready Monday afternoon, we have a budget committee meeting that's tentatively scheduled on Monday, and we, we could meet then, but I wanted to make sure how much time, like, that, that meeting typically is an hour long, if we need additional time, we maybe need to adjust our starting time.
So would we be available for those who are on the budget committee on Monday? What time?
It would be nice to have that before the budget meeting.
True, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I'll send that out to you tonight.
You want to go in there educated.
Yes, so you would get that to us before, Cameron, is that true? When would, when could we expect that?
So, the reports that are formatted reports, I can have those to you hopefully tonight. I'm just working through that right now. As far as getting an account detail report, that would be, I can get a printout, but those last amendments are not part of that, so I'd have to kind of build those together. That would, that'd be something I would be working on over the weekend, and hopefully have that to you as soon as possible, but.
Would, would.
That's the key thing, is those line items.
Yeah.
Can we meet on Tuesday instead?
I was going to say, should we, so they.
You've got to have Thanksgiving, you've got to go shopping, so.
So, you know, that would puts us at the 29th. Gordy, you're on the budget committee, correct? No, Nolan. Nolan, myself, Gina, would that give you, is Tuesday the 29th a good time to meet?
I could, I could meet Tuesday.
Okay.
Question for you, Cameron.
Yeah.
I'm on the, um, the committee that reviews health insurance and that kind of stuff, we have not met. Do you know the numbers on that, have you worked them in?
They are worked in, um, the numbers that you got at the beginning of October included those.
Okay.
Those, those are worked in already.
All year?
No, we've met a couple of times, but the last time we met, we didn't know the, the premium on the insurance and some of that.
I think it was back in September, yeah.
It wasn't reported to Warburton Mines Committee, so.
Right.
Oh, okay, um, but yes, I, I do have those from, from HR, and they have many incorporated in there.
But if you're aware of it, that's okay, as long as, as long as you're aware of it, you've got it. Because I don't even know if our insurance premium went up, did it go up very much?
Went up 2.14%.
Oh, that's not too bad.
It's been worse than the past.
When it was going up 15% in a year, that was killing us.
Yeah, yeah, so that was, that was a low increase.
Yeah, that's probably what we had need, it wasn't, it wasn't a big surprise.
All right.
So let me ask this, though.
Okay.
Are we going to have the budget committee review that, and then also a workshop? Or do we combine that, or separate it, so there's questions between the budget committee, or what's your thoughts there?
My, this is my thought, if you agree, or if you don't disagree, let me know, but we have that budget committee meeting on Tuesday, which gives Cameron time on Monday to get that to us before the meeting, correct? On Tuesday, then the budget committee will review that, but then we have a workshop with the whole council with all the line items in appropriate place.
I think it would be appropriate to send it to us all, even though we're not on the budget committee.
Okay, I'm agree with that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And if you guys call us, we can ask questions in the meeting, or bring up any concerns.
So if you'd email that to all the council members, and then the three smart ones on budget will meet with you, and the rest of us will put our input after.
Could I comment, you get to stay longer.
Is that agreeable to the council?
Yes, and then we'll have a workshop.
Then we'll have a workshop. When would you like to schedule the workshop? You say we have until the 15th, but we need to give the executive time to look at that also.
We're lined our meetings the 6th and the 13th in December.
Correct.
7/6.
We'll need to do it before the 6th.
I would say maybe Thursday of next week.
We're looking at the 2nd?
That would be the 1st.
The 1st, I'm sorry, yeah, the 1st.
1st is the.
Well, that's the county Christmas party.
Oh, that's right.
We don't want to ruin, ruin our appetite.
You know, earlier that afternoon.
I was going to say, we could do it in the afternoon.
Yeah, you're making the planning and zoning meet that afternoon, so.
Doing that, and we're not even paying you, you guys are pretty good guys.
I don't know.
Yeah, that afternoon.
That afternoon on the 1st? What time do you people want to meet for the workshop?
2 o'clock?
2 o'clock? Is that agreeable to everyone?
Yep.
What time is D and Z?
Yeah, what.
5:30.
5:30.
That should give us plenty of time.
All right, so what we're looking at is a budget, a special budget committee meeting on the 29th, correct?
Is that also at 2 o'clock, or what time is?
That's, I, this, I'm, I was going to verify that, thanks. So on the 29th, what time do we want to meet on the budget committee?
Nolan, what time?
2:00 or after?
2 o'clock?
Okay.
2 o'clock?
Okay.
You're talking budget committee.
Budget committee.
On the 29th.
On the 29th, and then workshop for the whole council on December 1st at 2 o'clock.
Okay.
That'll work.
That works for everyone?
You got it.
If you guys do a good job, I'll take you out for supper that night, okay?
On the 1st, I'm going to the county party.
That's where he's buying.
All right, now, now that we've done that, are there other people that are on the budget committee that we need to make sure they're aware of that meeting, Cameron?
There's a bunch on there.
So, yeah, the rest of the committee, I don't know if that's something that, um, you can communicate to Janine and have her schedule that, or everyone, that's what we would normally do.
Okay, okay, so I'll notify Janine tomorrow.
And have her notice the Thursday meeting as well.
Okay, good.
Just so you don't forget.
Yes, good idea. All right, people, so, we are not going to adopt the 2023 budget at this point, correct?
Correct.
Okay, do we need a motion for that?
No, we can just leave it on.
Okay, all right, thank you for going through that with me. All right, we're going to 11A, ordinance 2022-34, and ordinance modifying the Cache County Economic Development Department.
That would be me.
Okay.
And seeing how in our budget last time, we, and what we've been working toward with, moving economic development to BRAG as part of a regional approach to economic development, it seemed wise to me to do this right, because sometimes we just do stuff, and then we don't ever really put it in writing, and then follow, the next people that come along don't know what happened, so I have written an ordinance that, strangely, it creates an economic development department, sort of, and then just says that we're transferring all the functions, delegating the functions to BRAG, and making clear that we are abolishing the Office of Director of Economic Development, and any staff positions, including part-time staff and interns, that we're abolishing them. So it's very simple, the council has the power and authority to do this, and I thought this would be a good idea to make clear and, and put it in our ordinances that we did this. So, um, I will move adoption, waive the rules, and adopt this, oh, I do have one question, though.
I have a question also.
And I needed to ask Taylor this, and I didn't get it asked. When I wrote this, I just put in the usual, this ordinance takes effect 15 days following its passage, obviously, we don't want it to take effect in the middle of December, because we'll still have two weeks left, so.
Yeah, and he doesn't, he doesn't start at BRAG until January 1st.
Yeah, so what would be the best wording of how, how to put when it takes effect after we pass it?
So that deadline is, it's my understanding that that's a minimum, um, and so, any amount of time after that would be.
Would be okay, so we can leave that language in there, and it'll be okay for a short time after.
Yes.
It'll go through the end of the year, okay.
Gina, Nolan had a question.
That was my question, because I was like, the 15 days doesn't tie with his start time with the BRAG part, so I was just wondering how that would work, so.
What you're saying is, that's a minimum, that it has to be at least that, but if you want it to be beyond that, you should change it to a later date.
Oh, okay, I thought you meant we could do that and then have it, okay.
So we wanted, you want to state it to a later date, is that what you're saying?
I would change it to the date that you want.
Okay.
So.
Takes effect 1 January 2023.
31.
Or do we end it the day before, and then it starts?
End it this year, December 31st.
Basically, the, I think the termination of, of that.
It would have to be the 29th.
Of that, uh, uh, basically, of the economic director department here would be at December 31st, 2022.
Yeah, that we end it?
Or on a weekday night, would be the 29th, is it?
The 30th is a Friday.
Okay.
The 30th.
So we just put in, this ordinance takes effect, and we don't even have, say, 15 days, just put in December 30th, 2022.
At midnight?
So we just put in.
Well, let's.
Okay.
He's not going to start until January 1st.
Okay.
If we put this ordinance into effect before that.
Sean, do you have a comment?
That's going to cut him off on, on a few days on salary.
Okay.
Well, December 31st should be fine, though, right?
I don't know.
It should be, because that's when it's ending, and then you're starting the next day.
Yeah, I'm going to sound like an attorney on TV, and I admit that this is a moment of self-preservation here, but could it be worded such that it would be taking effect after BRAG hires for the position? Something that definitively, once BRAG has created the position and is on-boarded, then this one ceases to exist?
Yeah, that would make sense.
I'm, I'm just suggesting maybe specifically phrasing it that way, as opposed to a date definitive, then it's the action definitive? Just, I, I mean, I, I haven't really had all the details discussed with BRAG, so I'm just a little bit nervous, that's all.
I think if that's a problem, we can come back and change it, because.
Okay.
Why don't we just put that in there?
I, I would rather just put it in and be done, and just, just put the date December 31st, because my understanding is BRAG already made this.
We could do it just like insurance policies do. We'll go 1 a.m. on Ju, on January 1st.
What were you going to say?
I was just going to say, I'd like what Sean said, I mean, uh, effective upon BRAG's hiring of hiring of the economic development director.
Regional, yeah.
Coincide upon the hire from BRAG, which has been stated as January 1st, right?
I thought it already.
So, one, one way to phrase that would be, to be effective upon hiring by BRAG, but in no case at any time previous to 15 days after the passage of this ordinance, so that way you meet both, both standards.
We can't force BRAG to hire Sean, can we?
No, sir, I, I don't think so, I mean, you have three board members here, so.
I was going to say, I don't think we can force BRAG to say, hey, but I, I, but we can take care of our business here.
They'll take care of it there.
I ju, I just don't want to leave Sean in a position of limbo.
Yeah, that's, I agree with that, Carl.
Mrs. Millen greatly thanks you for that, too, thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with Carl.
I don't think it would, because it's been funded at BRAG. We've got the funding in our budget, it's going to go to BRAG.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
It's a done deal.
Isn't it a done deal?
I say we do it.
Thank you, Sean.
So I'm confused by this.
Effective December 31st.
Effective December 31st?
Are you definitely moving over there on January 1st, Sean?
Sorry, Madam Chair. The answer is, um, I would have to defer that to the board to just make sure that's absolutely firm. I think that that's been pretty well established and attested, but to Councilman Erickson's point, I, I think that, I know I'd feel more comfortable in tandem with this discussion tonight, that that were absolutely solidified, just that that mechanism were in place. That's the only part I'm nervous about, right, is a lapse in insurance coverage. Retirement's not a big deal within a few days, but I'm not trying to, you know, taunt anything either.
Well.
Well, do we want to wait and call him?
I, this, I.
Call Roger and see what's up?
Well, why can't we just put the wording in that was suggested, that, uh.
Well, then it's, I, I think if we're going to do an ordinance, we want it definitive.
But, uh.
That was the idea.
Sorry, I'm not trying to complicate things, I appreciate your.
I don't know, Sean, they might require a haircut, a beard cut, you know? When BRAG's.
I'll make that happen.
He might, he might want to be a little sharper looking than you are. Date start, or anything like that.
I was going to mention that, but I thought he grew it so he could be sanders, so.
I think he wants to look like a professor or something, I don't know, what are you doing?
I, I need to get the leather patches, but.
Do we need to call Roger and ask him, because I thought this was a done deal, that was my understanding.
Well, it's, it's been approved by the.
So, you know, another course you could take is set a definitive date. In the meantime, have one of you reach out to whoever you need to reach out to at BRAG. And if you see it necessary, you can amend it, you can pass a different ordinance next time, extending it, or modifying it how you want, so.
Good advice.
If you're desperate to get it done today, that's, that's what I would do.
I think we should get this done, and then check with BRAG, and if there's an issue, we can come back and change it, Sean, we don't want you living on Skid Row.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's not the case, and I think.
That's what we're trying to do.
We've got a BRAG meeting the 30th of this month. We're going to go in, and we have a BRAG board meeting November 30th. We can confirm at that time, we can confirm at that time, so we pass this today, effective the end of the year. We go to that meeting on the 30th, if there's any issues at all, we come back on the 6th, and we repeal the ordinance. And put in wording.
Whatever we need to.
But then that way, we can get this done here, based on everything that we've done so far, and then if we need to pull it back, because there's some, something wrong, we could pull it back, but then this doesn't continue to drag.
And that's not going to affect Sean's insurance, or anything like that?
Because it'll be, it ends one day and starts the next day.
Okay, so I'm going to move to amend this ordinance and strike 15 days following its passage and approval, I, I, help me out here, Taylor, if I'm doing this wrong, and insert, um, December 31st, 2022.
How about 11:59?
At 11:59 p.m.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second that.
And then I will move, we waive, oh, and also, we want to waive the rules.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, did anyone else have any other comments?
I forgot, we need to vote on the amendment first, sorry.
Okay.
I got ahead of myself.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we will make an amendment and change the date. Am I saying this correctly? Okay, that, change it to December 31st at 11:59 p.m., correct? And, um, okay, there's the amendment.
Of 2022.
Of 2022. All in favor? Aye, any opposed? All right, then we, there, it's been moved and seconded that we will waive the rules and approve ordinance 2022-34 with the amendment that has been stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, very good. All right, um, I pass out to everyone, we have a correction to account, Cache County Council meeting that was held clear back on March 9th of 2021, and this involved a, um, fire code. And the reason it was brought up was that Matt Phillips has been having some, uh, a person talking about this, where he can see that it was discussed, and he's gone, and Matt has gone back and looked at the, um, the, the meeting on the YouTube, but it doesn't ever, we don't, we never did have in the minutes that it was approved, and so he needs to have this amended and showing that we did approve in Mar, on March 9th, 2021, ordinance number 2021-09. So we need to have this taken care of.
Just a minutes correction, right?
Minutes correction.
I remember, I remember this vividly, it's, uh, it's prior. I remember, I remember this vividly, it's, it's, fire code's interesting. Anyways, we don't need to litigate that piece, this is just for the meeting minutes, so I would approve, or I would make a motion that we amend the meeting minutes from March ninth, twenty twenty-one, to include the copy of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero nine, where we adopted the fire code.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we amend the county council meeting minutes of March ninth, twenty twenty-one, to include a copy of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero nine.
And waive the rules.
And waive the rules, thank you, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you.
It's been passed twice now, because I see signatures and I see.
We're just putting it in the minutes.
We're just putting it, yeah.
I'd like to.
Everything's done.
Personally, I'd like to apologize for that, I was trying to think, why on earth, how did that happen, such a significant, I, we've had issues with, you know, grammar or something like that, or a period, or an executive session thing or something, but this one is significant, and I remember, it was when I had no staff, and so that was a difficult time, but, so I just wanted to apologize on behalf of my office for that.
Thank you, Jess. All right, eleven C, approval of an inter-local agreement creating the Cash Solid Waste Consortium. Looks like Lindsey, Mary Lindsey, is going to address us, thank you.
Hi.
Been waiting a long time.
Yes, she has.
I know, and I have a lot of council time, even on my own, without this one.
By what we do, what you should do in your own council.
Not at all, so, I hope this isn't brand-new information for you all, but this is the culmination of, really, eleven months of work with the county and with the cities, and what we've done is, we issued an RFP for waste hauling this summer, and then we had those haulers answer that, they submitted their bids, we did that knowing that we didn't actually have the legal authority to issue that RFP, and so what the next step was, is creating this inter-local entity, that, we've done that by meeting together all of the cities and all of the, and the county as well, ultimately, what we did is, Taylor drafted up that agreement, that original agreement, and then, a couple of weeks ago, I met with the city attorneys from each of those towns and also Taylor, and we just hammered out all the kinks in that agreement. And what I've been trying to do over the last week and a half is trying to get every entity to sign that agreement. After that time, after we get all of the signatures, we will be reissuing that RFP, and then getting bids from, likely from those same waste haulers. So, this is really a great sign, we've had both Nolan and David in those meetings, so hopefully, they can back up what I'm saying, but this is kind of just a formality that, that has been strongly vetted, I would argue that you'd, the county has had the strongest voice in this by virtue of being the author of the inter-local agreement, so, any questions on this?
Do we have a copy of this?
Yeah, I.
You should.
Copy to Janine Thursday of last week.
We, we don't have it, at least I don't have it.
You emailed it out, I got, I received it, so the rest of them, they should have received it, too.
And if I can say, time is really of the essence on this, I respect your, your desire to see what's in it, but what I've tried to do is encourage the different municipalities and also the county to, to sign off on what your legal counsel has recommended with this, this, like, this has been a long time in the works.
Does this basically replace the service area one?
It does, yeah, so, so I'll just kind of tell you generally what it is, it contemplates a large body of every mayor and, and the county that makes important decisions like what fees to charge, which hauler to haul the garbage, they make all of the substantive decisions, and then there's going to be an executive committee with a representative from the south, east, sorry, the south, north, and west of the valley, and then the county as well, so they'll have a representative. And it does not give bonding authority to this, to this entity, yeah, so it's basically an entity that allows us to contract with a waste hauler for the collection of garbage.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dave and Nolan?
I'd really like to read this before I approve it, that's just.
I, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing it.
Again, I respect that, I do, but, like, I have been.
I read it, that's just, I'm just saying.
I, I understand that, but, this has been extremely frustrating, because I have literally been asking for this every few days for the past two weeks.
Wait a week, can we add this to our agenda with the budget that we're going to, that would give us time to review?
When I say that, like, the county will be the only entity that does this, and, and like I said, I, like, I respect that, that desire to read through this contract, I just don't know how I can facilitate this more, you guys have three representatives on that committee, including the author of the document, and so.
But it's still my duty to read it, and so, I'm just, that's.
Well, and I view this process as a process by which you authorize agents to act in your behalf, that's what this is.
It was on eleven fifteen.
Eleven fifteen?
Eleven fifteen, the MOU from Dane Murray.
Taylor just sent it, so.
Is that right? That's the one I got.
Uh, yeah, I just resented just now.
Thank you, Taylor.
I don't know that it would be an MOU.
It says consortium inter-local agreement.
Yeah, that's the one.
That's the one that he just now sent?
Yeah, I didn't get anything.
I didn't either, I'm sorry.
Eleven fifteen's the MOU, right, not the local agreement?
Yeah, so the MOU wouldn't be it. You two for sure have it, the inter-local agreement, yeah, well, yes, and/or Taylor.
Name nine nineteen.
Uh, okay, let me.
Nine nineteen, is that right?
No, that's, that's an old version, let me.
Okay, don't look at that.
And I will say, the background for this, being time of the essence, is that we do have kind of a ticking clock with Logan City, they've been great up to this point, as far as, you know, not having that hard and fast time at which they'll just not collect our garbage, but I'd rather not test that. I mean, I can send it to you right now, if, if you guys need it. Taylor, I can.
Yeah.
Send you the exact one. You sent it to me on November eighteenth at five forty-three PM.
Yes. What are they saying, that this nine nineteen one wasn't, was the most up-to-date, or it's not the most?
It's not, there's a new one.
I, I got it.
I apologize, I'm sending that right.
Really, I never did get it.
Just now.
You got the nine nineteen one? Look at the date on it, Carl, at the top, and the name of the document.
To.
Yep, nine nineteen.
To you, David, would you mark the wording in?
Only thing I'm really looking at is this, I think, commission.
That's all I got.
They got it.
Yeah.
Don't have all their email addresses.
How long is it?
The agreement?
Yeah.
The substance.
Yeah, we could read it now, that's like, what, four pages or something?
Lindsey's been amazing and put a lot of time in this, so.
I appreciate that.
It's substantively about eleven pages long. So they don't have all of your email addresses, so.
Yeah, I got it, Taylor, and I think Dave Erickson has it, and did you say you had it, Paul?
I got the one for the he just sent, but it was the nine nineteen one.
Yeah, we have the old one.
I'm just resending it to all of you.
Okay.
Taylor just sent it to me, I'm forwarding it to all of you.
So, like Lindsey said, we worked with several attorneys, Seth Tate, who represents many of the cities, all of the cities have had a lot of input, and it's been kicked around by just four or five attorneys for three weeks now.
This one's the eleven twenty, eleven twelve agreement?
Yes.
Counsel.
Do you guys have that?
Yes, we have it.
Okay.
I haven't gotten it yet, but I can look over here.
Can we just send it to you, Barbara?
That'd be great.
Makes sense after you get it through all the warehouses.
I don't blame the attorneys, there's a joke there, we sat in a room of attorneys and came up with this.
Sometimes the email is funky that way. So I just sent it to you, too, so.
Okay, thank you. Brett, or Bart, I'm not receiving my mail again.
As far as the governing structure, it mirrors a lot with COG.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
As far as the COG committee, mirrors that quite, actually, identical less, a couple other municipalities.
Yeah.
So.
I was just saying, checking for mail.
Account error.
Yeah, and I changed that.
A couple of key things that pull out of here is that we talked about, is that the consortium is not authorized to acquire, lease, or create any interest in real property or incurred debt.
So, so, we, we did originally have that, so that.
Except that the board.
Yes, so, every, that larger board, everyone would have to vote on that.
And I think that was critical.
Yeah.
Are those other cities, as of your last email that you sent, have those other cities followed up now and signed?
The one that I sent earlier today?
Yeah.
Um.
Eleven oh eight, yeah.
Yeah, I have almost all of them.
Good.
And I, I've spoken with every single mayor, so I know that they're coming, if I don't have them yet.
So how many cities have opted out?
So it's Richmond, Lewiston, Providence, Smithfield.
Smithfield.
Are you a Smithfield rep? Why are you pointing at him?
He's a good man, he's on the city council.
Got it.
He'll get even with me later. Because they wanted that to be brought into the executive committee.
We don't get, I mean, that's the.
Because they wanted it to be like COG.
Okay. It all talks about mayors, or their designees, and then we don't, we just have this, but not or designate, and then it gets down here, and says you can
Yes.
Get all these people, but that's not really the case, because there's no chance for that to ever happen.
True.
Well, I didn't see anything that concerned me.
See if you come down to here. Members selected from the county council, because they said this is where they want the power, but I understand what you're talking about, because we discussed it.
Hey Nolan, why does it say, under executive committee, something about county council, but I don't see yet where any county council members are a part of it?
Go down to seven, where it says executive committee, and it talks about who it's composed of.
How come? Did you still, did you get it?
I still haven't gone.
Did you get it on your other email, your podcast? What the heck?
Yeah.
Sorry, did you guys have a question?
I guess, I guess the question, just so you explain that, because Dave and I heard it, but as it comes to it, the governing structure, because the county's so much in it, but yet it only has the county executive, but that was based because they wanted to construct that just like COG, is that your understanding, Dave? That's the, that was the pattern that was mirrored, it was mirrored after. And that's the way the mayors wanted to go that way, mostly.
Yeah, so, so, originally, how we contemplated it is the executive committee would have substantive power, like, that they would be making those decisions, then we flipped that, and so now, the executive committee, in my view at least, is more of just a burden, yes, so it's an advisory board, they cannot take any substantive action. So they can, they'll, for instance, if someone were to come and say, we'd like to join this consortium, that advisory committee would recommend what that path is to joining, or vice versa with exit.
Well, you got the governing board and the executive committee, because the governing board is the one that has the executive.
Right, so the governing board has the, the actual power, the executive committee is advisory.
So here's a question, I noticed something about, that board members can have a designate, but that board, that designate cannot vote, because no board member may vote or otherwise act by proxy at any meeting of the board, is that right? So if you have somebody go for you because you can't go, that person can't vote for you, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, what section are you looking at?
Three quorum and voting, or, let's see.
Didn't that come down because of?
Executive committee terms.
Because of the elected position, that they didn't want somebody who was not elected?
Yeah, so that, that, yeah, that's exactly right, Nolan, sorry to interrupt you.
I'm just wanting to clarify.
Yeah, so, that was a point of contention, at least with Providence, they were hoping to be able to send unelected people in, on behalf of elected officials.
E D manager or something, they just want to go send there and.
And we, we just felt strongly that that shouldn't, that shouldn't happen.
I agree with that, so, I'm just trying to say. Thank you, Lindsey.
Mm-hmm.
Did you finally get it to come through?
Yeah, but here I go.
It may take a minute to catch up, but.
Okay, so really, as far as the county's representation on that executive committee, they will be one of four, and then with also the tiebreaker, so they, they arguably have more representation than any other entity, I mean, they do, flat out, because they're going to have a quarter of that vote in addition to potentially the county executive being the tiebreaker.
In, in the advisory body.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So on four, we talked about issuing bond, but didn't we talk about no debt for five years?
We did, so that was when we were talking about having that executive committee have more power. So instead, what we did is said, "Let's give this body more versatility, but require the sign off of every member of that governing board," or, you know, or at least the majority of that board. We, what we were trying to avoid in doing that was figuring out how we let people in and out of this agreement. But instead, we just kind of decided to face that and say, "Let's actually contemplate that, people leaving or, or coming in." I appreciate you guys doing this on the fly.
So Nolan and David, you're our representatives. Do you see any reason why we shouldn't authorize this to be adopted by the county?
This has been beaten, hashed, and walked over, and thrown outside and recovered again, so
So?
A lot of the mayors have had input. I mean, we're talking about a waste
Every single one has, yeah.
Yes.
It's, it's been vetted, and, and a lot of neat ideas, and how that's put together, and then we start going down one area, and then all of, no, it's, I think they've come to a really good consensus.
I mean, I agree, at first, we were talking about that the county needed to have a lot of representation on it, so the governing board, but everybody went back to COG, and that was the, that's why that came that way, so if COG operates, they felt that this would operate the same manner into that side, so.
Me as a reader, I haven't been able to read it at all, but it looks to me like it's well thought through.
Well, you've, you've got a piece of paper that's been looked at by how many attorneys?
Um, at least six. Seven, John, you know, so you've got three from your, from the county, and then we had five plus me, if you count me.
Well, you should count you. So Lindsay, tell me, am I understanding that the idea here is to construct or provide a solid waste management facility?
Only if absolutely needed.
Yeah, so
I haven't maybe gotten that far, I'm partway through it, and that's what I've seen.
Again, it's hard when you ask me those, the questions out of the context of the agreement, because that's, it's crucial, so if you tell me where you're reading, I can tell you what, what.
Well, there's stuff in here under powers of the consort
Okay, so yeah, that's, that's meant to be an exhaustive list of what we can do as a consortium. I think it's important that we, that we have that ability, whether in the judgment of the committee, we actually do that, is a whole other question.
That can be, is what comes back from the RFP.
Yeah.
And there might be some say, "Hey, we can really cheapen this for you guys."
Yeah.
If you have this and this, and then we can look into those things and actually make good decisions if we have that ability to do that.
Yeah.
Hate to take that off the table when we could
Okay.
You know, possibly
What did we decide?
Be in the process of getting that set up to make it cheaper in the future.
Okay.
Did we come back with anything as far as a non-compete meeting, some city who stays out then enters in later on?
Yeah, so the non-compete will come into play once we enter into a contract with a hauler, so that is a good point to mention. That one thing that we want to avoid is having someone piggyback on the hard work of this consortium. And so say that we bring in one of the haulers, we'll call it ABC Corp., who hauls for us, and we, our cost of doing that is built into what our, our contract would, would reflect that. And so what we didn't want to have is one of these other locations that since left the consortium be able to say, "Hey, us too," but we don't want any of the obligations that come with this. So we've, I've told the haulers, "We will expect you to sign a non-compete." You can't haul for the consortium and these other tiny, these other cities.
Kay, then I have a question.
Did that so that they would come in afterwards at a lower bid?
I know, but, man, Howdy, that is bad.
And
I don't agree with that at all.
Why?
Because you're, you, think about, think about it. We got a free enterprise system. And you're going to put a non-compete that that hauler can't haul for anybody else?
Sure am, and it's on the recommendation of counsel, be, because, well
I disagree a hundred percent with that. I just want that noted right here and right now.
Oh, sure, I will write that down, however, but you, you have to understand the, the thought behind it.
I understand the thought behind it.
Which is, well, tell me how
Competitive behavior by the government.
That's not competitive behavior. Taylor, can you render an opinion as to the legality of a non-compete? I mean, we're within the bounds of our legal authority.
Very, very common.
Right.
The reason why you would do that is to prevent people from free riding
Correct.
On the taxpayers of the county, and being able to subsidize, Smithfield being able to subsidize their trash collection at the expense of the rest.
Yeah, so when you're talking about capitalism
How long can a non-compete last?
For the duration of that contract.
Have you looked into the legality of how long non-compete lasts?
Personally, I have not, but the group of lawyers has.
Did you guys look at that?
There's been a lot of litigation on non-compete recently.
Yes, there are, and typically, the length of them extends to after a relationship ends, so
Correct, so that they left, the
So if, so if we disengage from a certain hauler, they would be allowed to then
No, if, if a municipality leaves the consortium, and then wants to contract with that hauler, how long would they have to stay out before they can contract with that hauler?
That's an open question.
But that's not
You need to look at, at the, some of the recent court cases for how long this person would have to sit on the sidelines, because it can't be for the duration of that contract.
The case law about that pertains to employee relationships typically, that has been litigated. That's not what we're
It's been litigated, but do you think
This
They would use that as precedent in this litigation?
I don't, because I think it's a distinct, I think what, what the, the litigation over that has been over how long can you tie the hands of an employee, and geographically, how broad can you prevent them from entering into a contract? I think that's distinct from the situation that we're contemplating here. We're not saying that they, we're not saying that they can't ever haul in the valley, we're saying you can't, you can't cherry pick, like you can't say, because I'm, the, the motive behind this is that, hey, Providence is totally welcome to exit the consortium. What they're not welcome to do is say, "Hey, I love that deal you struck, but I'm not going to throw anything into this pot." That, that's, that's what we're trying to prevent. And it's not, it's not anti-capitalist by any stretch.
It's anti-competitive, is what it is, period.
Okay, well, like I said, I'm relying on the opinion or the advice from legal counsel for the county and for those entities, and I've run it past them, none of whom have brought up any concerns with this from a legal standpoint. So if you want to substitute your judgment for theirs, that's your, that's your ability.
A hundred percent like to do that. I've done it before, and I'll do it again, and I was right the last time, BTW, so.
I mean, I can't speak to that, but, but I, I, I think it behooves us to respect the legal analysis of those who've been trained to conduct the legal analysis.
I have a question, I have a question.
Okay, as I understand this, because we have three mem, council members from Logan City, we cannot participate in any of that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
It has to be a council member that represents the entities that are, that are in the consortium.
You're invited to move to the North District.
Anytime.
Or the Northeast, to be my neighbor. That'd be fun.
But Paul, to your point, that is something that has not, that's not firm. That, that's just something that I've talked to the haulers about. The other way of doing it is to say that they can't, they, they have to give us the best price. So I, I liken
That's a completely different thing than, than
And that's where I think we're headed, is we didn't want
And you could do, that's fine.
Yeah, so
Anti-competitive stuff, I'm just
Right, and that, that's not in this case
We don't even need to go any further. You're trying to curtail private entities from contracting with other folks in the valley. It's a no-go for me.
So that, this, this agreement does not contemplate that at all? That, that's outside of this agreement?
Lindsay, what, I'm looking at number 12 on withdrawal, so if a party wants to withdraw, they can do that within a year?
Within a year of the, end of the contract.
Within a year of the end of the contract.
Yeah, so basically, you have to tell the other entities in advance that you're planning on not renewing that contract.
So like, this ends 2030, and then it has an auto-renew, right, so you would have to tell them in 2030?
Sorry, so the end of the waste hauling contract. So it runs with whatever contract we enter into as an inter-local agreement. So that, again, the reason for that is because when we, when we get bids from these haulers, it's contingent on the number of cans that they're coming up to haul, you know, so we're getting economy of scale from them. And so if, say, North Logan were to exit that agreement, that materially changes that contract. And so basically, without that, you would be giving any given city, or at least a sizable city, the ability to dissolve this relationship, or at least the contractual relationship with the hauler. So we had to have some teeth in there so that, so that we remain a body that can contract, basically.
One, to protect the hauler, two, so that you can then get a true RFP for the next five years on that contract, 10 years, whatever the contract.
Right.
Okay.
You know, that protects both.
Thanks, I just wanted to try to understand. Okay, thank you.
Well, I will make a motion to accept and approve the inter-local cooperation agreement between Cache County and the participating municipalities of Cache County. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we would Pardon me?
We need to waive the rules.
Okay.
Waive the rules.
Brand new.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we will ra, that we are willing to waive the rules and approve the inter-local agreement creating the Cache Solid Waste Consortium. All in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Aye. But it passes.
Thanks, everyone. It's always a good time.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work on this, Lindsay.
Thanks for your patience. You've sat there a long time.
No, I appreciate you guys waiting tonight. It really was
Okay, thank you, Lindsay. All right. Other business, employee Christmas dinner, Thursday, December 1st. Amy wanted me to let you know to please make sure to RSVP her. Have, has everyone done that?
I did.
You did? Okay, very good, all right. Okay, all right, council member reports. Let's start with Carl.
Uh, nothing.
Nope, offspring.
Gina? Okay, Paul.
Nothing for me.
Nolan?
For two days.
I don't think of anything, can't think of anything.
Okay, Gordy?
Thought we had an excellent convention down to UAC. I think we, we were very well taken care of with both information presented and the participation and all the other things. I went on a chief ride that was unbelievable.
Awesome, good deal. David?
The only thing I was going to report is from the board meeting for UAC that just, that we should have received the 226,288 and 24 cents. The first payment of that, basically it's a L A T C F allocation, and the second one is, should be coming. But we need to address and possibly bring up, maybe on the 6th, and bring it, just put it in as part of the budget, see how you guys feel about putting that 1% to send to NACO to set up that research center for the pub, for public lands issues. So the 1% of that portion, which is money that's unencumbered at all.
Uh, that money then doesn't have to be used to compensate for people who had
The money that we've received?
Yeah.
No, it's unencumbered.
Yeah.
Will you send that wording to me, or send it to Janine, please, Dave, so that we can get it correctly on the agenda?
That'd be good. That's the only thing I got from the board meeting, really, that we, they really hope that there's, there were 13 counties that had not yet either applied for it, and they were hoping to get all the counties to, to apply for it, and it's actually a pretty good sum of money that we've received for having so little BLM lands in our county. So, but it's also based on population.
Great.
I guess with what you just said, you get that one county that they said, what, 95% federal land?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got some holding money.
Yeah. Okay, I have a couple things. We are receiving applications for the policy analyst position. Amy said we have about 15 applications. We need to get a committee together, a hiring committee for that. I'm probably four to five people. I'd like a couple, of course, council members for that, who would be willing to serve on that hiring committee from the council. I'm going to. Dave, okay?
Well, see, when do you think that would be? So I may not be physically able a little bit later here.
Oh, okay.
Maybe after the 15th of December.
Yes.
Then I wouldn't be able to probably.
Let me double check with Amy. I talked to her today. I think she was thinking before the 15th, but let me double check with her.
I could arrange something if I get
Okay.
Get one week, I'll be out of town for a few days, but other than that.
Okay.
If he can, I'll help.
Okay, thanks, Nolan.
On those lines, if we, before getting, you know, a bunch of applicants for that position, 15, does anybody know why the developmental services director has been sitting open for a half a year? Are we not getting applications for that, Joe?
Good question.
Have a meeting next week with staff to review any new applications we've received.
How many have we received so far this year?
I'm not sure. I've heard we have
There is two recent that have come out to me. Have you got them?
Myself?
Yeah, Amy sent one, and then Casey Dorgetti just sent one yesterday. But it was under a
For development services?
Yes, yes, but it was under a new program that I had to sign up.
Yeah, yeah.
Sound like, uh, here goes another password.
Okay. All right, very good. I'll get with Amy on that, and I'll look at, okay. Okay, um, I, I would like everyone to look before the beginning of the year at your board and committee assignments, and I'll have Janine send this back out, get everyone's opinion of what, if they want to make any changes or anything like that, so that we have that. Yeah, Gordy, you want to change yours?
Well, I'm just wondering, you know, when you start looking at those committees and that, we got to factor in the three new councils.
I've already sent this out to them, and asked them to take a look at it, right, Mark? And asked them to take a look at it and see if they had any interest in any of these boards or committees. Okay, so send me anything that you want on that. And then the last thing is, we, in the past, I know Nolan and I talked about this, and I think we brought it up, of buying candy for the planning and zoning committee for Christmas, getting them a box of candy. Is everyone agreeable to that, to come out of the council budget?
You bet, but now they know the Christmas present.
Okay, and I checked with Amy, and she says, "As long as we don't go over $50 per box, we're good," so, okay.
We don't want to be for chocolates, so we run them around bouncing off the walls.
Yeah, so I will, I will take care of that. Maybe with Nolan's help, we can take care of that, okay? All right, very good. We now need to move into executive session. Could I have a motion for that?
Madam Chair, I propose that we go and meet as, in an executive session, knowing that we'll come back down here, back here and dismiss the meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we move into executive session under Utah Code 52, 52 dash four dash two zero five one A, discussion of the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual. All in favor? or physical or mental health of an individual. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?